Good afternoon to everyone. So this is the afternoon session of the Committee of Adjustment for Toronto and East York. So, welcome. These hearings are being held under the auspices of the Planning Act. And just wanted to remind everyone in terms of what the committee does and what we can entertain. So the committee considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property. We also give permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses. And we can consent to sever property to create new lots. We have some lengthy introductory remarks, but I'd ask you to stay with me. Committee wants to, without going further, we're honored to acknowledge that we're meeting on the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishinaabe, the Chipewa, and the Hootishoni, and the Wendat peoples. And it's now home, excuse me, to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. So, again, by way of introduction, so committee public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer or smartphone or telephone, and they have the option of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry, so when your item is called, you must be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time, and we ask that you mute your devices in between. Those persons participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to a panelist when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You'll only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled and you'll be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations that are submitted in accordance with a written deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use share screen or any other panelist control during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. All right, about decisions of the committee today. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the Committee of Adjustment on an application, they must fill out a decision request card. And those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure you include your name, address, and email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. All right, what happens if you don't, if you're not agreed with the decision of committee? If you don't agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, and this is important, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons, and public bodies, as those terms are defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. So if you obtain, you know, a copy of the decision, you'll see notations at the bottom in terms of the appeal instructions. Okay. Wording about procedure, so we're into the afternoon portion of the agenda. I'm gonna call each item, I'll check with our Deputy Secretary of Treasury on certain matters. So, where an application is uncontested, the agent or the applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair, should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions or take the matter into committee for discussion and decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I'll comment when you're reaching that five-minute limit. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, would you please clearly state your name and address? Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. All right, in terms of order, the applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Please note, the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised, because we want to ensure that the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then, other individuals, either in support or opposed to the application, will be invited to speak. Generally, we first call on speakers who are here in the hearing room with us, and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they finish their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. That'll mark the end of the discussion, and the application will be taken into the committee, into this panel for discussion and for a decision. All right, Madam Deputy Secretary of Treasury, before proceeding further, are there any requests for deferrals for items on our afternoon agenda?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do just have the one request for deferral. There was a second request for deferral, but they no longer require that request.
I see.
So we'll just deal with the one, item number 20, 14 McKenzie Avenue, file number We do have the agent online. There are three registered speakers that we can also unmute to see if they are in favor of the request for deferral.
Okay.
But let's start with the agent first.
Yes, thank you. All right, just returning to my notes, and yes, so referring to item 20, 14 McKenzie Avenue, is there an agent or owner on the line or present in the hearing room?
Good afternoon. This is Martin Zabzuni at 1140 Queen's Way.
Okay, thanks. You're the agent for the applicant?
Correct.
All right, thank you. All right, well, we understand there's a request for a deferral. Why are you asking for it? What's happening?
Yes, so we've been working with City Planning and the Heritage Department. We made several revisions and reductions to the House. However, we are missing a building depth variance that is imperative to have on the application. And we're also waiting for an update from the councillor and the Heritage final review and permit, and that's the reason that we do require a deferral in order to coordinate and clear up these requirements.
Yes, that seems quite reasonable, considering those consultations. All right, sir, there are other interested persons in connection with this, so I'll just ask you to stand by for the moment.
Thank you.
Deputy Secretary of Treasury?
Sure, through you, Mr. Chair. We'll unmute the resident at 47 Hunter Street. Sorry, sorry, 43 McKenzie Avenue, David Allgood.
Hello, Mr. Allgood, do we have you on the line?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, could you speak up a little bit louder? Thank you.
Okay, this'll be short. I gather we're not discussing the merits today, so I won't repeat what I put in my written submission.
Okay.
I guess that will happen when we actually reconvene on this matter. The one point I would make is I did present at the, this is the second deferral, at the first deferral, there was an undertaking by the applicant to consult with the neighbors.
Yes.
As far as I can determine, canvassing the various people in the neighborhood, there's been no such consultation. So I would just note that the applicant does not seem to be following through on his undertakings.
All right, thank you for that. I'll remind him when we get back to that, yes. Yes, further to speak?
Okay, the next speaker resides at 12 McKenzie Avenue. We're unmuting them.
Hi, hi, it's Hannah Tamas speaking from 12 McKenzie Avenue. I second what my neighbor said. This is the second time they're asking for a deferral.
I see.
There was, we are their next-door neighbors to the west. There was no effort made to contact us to work together, and in fact, the variances, the adjustments that they're asking for further infringe on our property. I don't really see where they're going with this with the second deferral. They don't mention anything about trying to work with the neighborhood on this.
That's all right, thank you for that submission.
Through you, Mr. Chair, will now unmute the resident at 49 McKenzie Avenue.
Yes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hello.
Obviously, 49 McKenzie. I support the deferral. I'd like to have a chance that the developer can make some changes to the proposal.
I see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we can go back to the agent now?
Yes. Hi, yes, just back to the agent, you're with us? Yes, sorry. Yeah, hi, sorry I didn't catch your first name, yes. All right, well, you've heard, you've made your deferral, you've heard from some interested residents and neighbors, seems reasonable to grant this deferral so that you can, you know, deal with other departments and hopefully make some revisions. But also, I guess I'll echo their complaint, which was that they really thought, as neighbors, that they would have a chance to be consulted and to fully understand what is happening. So I'm gonna ask that you do that if committee gives a deferral today.
Absolutely.
All right. Members, any questions, motion then, please? I think we should, yeah, yes.
I'll move that we agreed or approved the request for deferral based upon further consultation with city staff and also consultation with the neighbors.
Thanks, Mr. Gordon. Yes. Oh, that's good. All right, all in favor? Okay, sir, the deferral is given, and we hope that there'll be good follow-up by everyone when the matter, so that when the matter comes back to committee, everyone will be up to speed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair, now we can proceed with item number 17.
Thank you. Yes, so we're returning, sorry, to item 17A, B, and C, and I'll just say before this comes, so we have an application for consent to sever here, and two minor variance applications, presumably to flesh out the zoning standards for new lots if they are created. So, yes, all right, I'll just give you a little more detail. On this 17 Boothroyd Avenue, it's to obtain consent to sever the property into two undersized residential lots. The purpose is to construct a new three-story detached dwelling. Committee has the following before us: draft plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations, covering a letter from Craig Race's agent, an earlier decision of committee from 2020, and also a Toronto local appeal body decision and order affecting the property. In terms of commenting agencies, we have an email from Assistant Planner in Community Planning. We have staff reports from Engineering and Construction. We have a request from Metrolinks. There's also a report from Community Planning. And we also have a tree protection and plan review from Urban Forestry. All right, in support of this application, there is correspondence, excuse me, correspondence in support from Slavish Mazudi at 102 Boltby Avenue. Interested or concerned persons, a flow to Mr. David Pearl at 12 Boothroyd Avenue.
Through you, Mr. Chair, just point of correction, so it's to construct a new three-story detached dwelling on each of the undersized residential lots, and those would be two lots in total?
Yes.
Okay. We do have the agent online. We also have three registered speakers in interest. At this time, we'll unmute Craig Race.
All right, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, committee members.
Good afternoon, and I'm just on 17, I'm just going to move on to the minor variances for a moment, just to, yeah, okay. All right, so it's an application to sever the property and then seeking variances from the zoning standards on both those new lots, new lots if created, and we understand, yep, we're going to construct a new three-story detached dwelling.
Mr. Seth, could please pull up our supporting material?
All right.
It's called, it has a weird name, it's called CA Plans S Design Brief on the portal. That's it, thank you. So the application before the committee is for severance for a site in the Pocket Neighborhood in the east end of Toronto, near Danforth and Jones. As mentioned, there is a previous minor variance decision that allows this site to have a three-and-a-half-story, six-unit apartment building constructed on the site. That's the graphic on the left. That includes an additional story as well as front and rear additions for the existing apartment building on the site. The owner has not undertaken that work yet due to new EHA policies that could yield a more attractive build form out of smaller, more appropriate house forms, which is why we're here today. Next page, please. So the subject property is very large, it's 47 feet by 183 feet, as indicated by highlighted here in blue. Next page, please. As mentioned, we're seeking to sever the lot into two, each suitable for a home or a multiplex. The massing at the top is what was approved, which, as I mentioned, includes an additional story and additions for six units. Instead, we would like to pivot to two house forms, more in keeping with the neighborhood and current EHA policies. Next page, please. We completed a study of the area, and all properties in the immediate vicinity, highlighted here in blue, will be smaller than either of the proposed lots. The only exception being 66 Booth, or Boltby, which is a bit of an outlier. Next page, please. Similarly, all adjacent frontages will be smaller, except for one, than the proposed lots. This speaks to how large the current lot really is. Even when split into two, the resulting lots will be the largest properties in the neighborhood.
Sir, what's the frontage length, sorry, on the subject land, what's the frontage length?
The frontage is 7.13 meters.
Okay, thank you.
So, next page, please, whoever's in control of the slideshow. So, we have a sample site plan here. It's important to note that no buildings are included as part of this application. This is purely to create the lots. The houses that will result are intended to be fully as of right. But there is an existing shared driveway along the south boundary that will be maintained. This is an entitled right-of-way that preserves parking for both the subject land as well as the neighborhoods of the south. And as I mentioned, any proposed footprints will be fully as of right. The blue footprints we're indicating are compliant with the current zoning bylaws and would not require minor variances. Next page, please. Access to the site for construction and for long-term operation is something we have gone to lengths to resolve. An additional easement across the front will ensure that both lots have ample access. This was a key element identified to us by city staff during the design process, and it was justified to us as being necessary for construction access, which we agree with. The owner of this site owns a company that builds mid-block houses, laneway suites, and darden suites. And infill sites like this are becoming very common. There's something he and I work on regularly in Toronto. The easements we're providing will ensure that the access needed for operation and construction are ample and are typical to what we see on many of our projects. Next page, please. Before I conclude, I do want to mention, we did have a conference with several neighbors, a quasi-online public meeting. The feedback we received was generally that this pivot is beneficial when compared to the apartment building that's currently approved. We also got several points from the neighbors about preserving access to parking and other concerns that we're taking under advisement. But the question we need to ask ourselves here is, what is better? A six-unit apartment building or two houses with equal housing potential in smaller built forms? We believe this new approach is more suitable and fits the neighborhood, as is demanded by the Neighborhoods Chapter in the official plan, and it builds on the EHA efforts of council steering our infill work towards this new typology, which actually is not new. There's a well-established precedent of homes on infill lots all over this neighborhood. We hope you agree, and either way, new housing will be built here, and the pursuits of infill housing in the city will be accomplished, whether it's through this application or the existing approvals. It's simply a question of which forum they take, and we believe that this forum is vastly superior for many reasons. Thank you, committee members, and happy to take any questions.
Yes, just on that issue, then, each dwelling will just have one unit, there's no multi-unit in the new proposal?
They may be multi-unit, sir. As of right, every lot in Toronto is permitted to have fourplexes as of last summer. So that is presumably the densest scenario, but again, the idea is to accomplish essentially the same amount of density already approved for the site in buildings that don't need elevators and double stairs and common space.
Thank you. Members, are there any questions for this particular agent or owner? All right, seeing none, all right, thank you, sir. We'll ask you to step back, and we'll hear from other speakers.
Through you, Mr. Chair, at this time, we'll unmute the owner at 47 Hunter Street.
4700, okay.
Dylan, can you hear us?
Hi, sorry, this is Bill Gerard, I was on mute. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, excellent, sorry about that. Hi, yeah, I'm just gonna say that I think that in the aspect of the building property being two properties with a more house-form style of architecture, I think I want to reinforce that the system will probably be more attractive with that than the previously applied-for building system.
You said you feel it'll produce more traffic, is that what you said?
No, I'm not saying it'll produce more traffic, I think it'll be more in keeping with the neighborhood.
Okay. Yes, any further remarks? Sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's it for me, thank you.
No questions? No. Through you, Mr. Chair, we'll unmute the owner at 20 Boothroyd Avenue.
Hi, good afternoon, yes.
Good afternoon, oh, good afternoon, you can hear me. My name is Peter Farncombe at 20 Boothroyd Avenue. I would like to simply support the application that's been made. There are concerns, and I've lived in this house, it's a tiny house, opposite 17 Boothroyd since 1991. Parking is an issue, and it has been pretty well since I moved in, since our family moved in. But I think that the representative for the building at 17 said that parking was being taken under advisement. I just jotted that down, I believe those were the words. That could be a concern. I don't know what other folks would say. It's not particularly a concern for me personally, because I am disabled and have a disability permit for the vehicle that I own. I am concerned about the current residents at number 17 Boothroyd. This may not be within the province of this committee to deal with. However, there is one family at least that will be unhoused if the construction proceeds in the, in a timely way, and I don't think it would be to anybody's advantage, the family themselves or anybody of the neighborhood, for those folks to have to leave before construction is in place. Of course, the fact that apparently there is a possibility of the house-form style being a multi, of a multi-nature, that this family might be able to, in fact, remain in place. But it would be a serious blow to them to have the young man who is currently proceeding very well in high school moved to a different place. As I say, I know that that's not within the committee's purview, and of course, the young man that I'm thinking of has parents, and they're part of the community neighborhood. So I think in these kinds, personally, I think in these kinds of situations, you have to sort of offset the need for more housing, and certainly I'm in favor of that, and I'm also in favor of multiplex units. Putting that in the context of the immediate neighborhood, which of course is a consideration, it's hard to dismiss the issue of this particular family or other families if they are there. It's, it really is a situation that is perhaps not unique, but it's special in the circumstances of who is in the building. Now, I know, I respect the fact that the owner and the, excuse me, architect have not made final decisions on these, and in fact, as I said earlier, that it is up to the owners within a reasonable situation to make the decisions that they want with respect to a particular occupant of a particular unit at the time. If somebody could comment on that, I would appreciate it. But that is the only concern that I have with the, with the application as it's put The frontage issues, I think, have been dealt with. The, in other words, one of the two variants, in fact, both issues are, not variants, but both concerns are addressed, and that's certainly good to see. But I would ask that the needs of the individuals in the, on the street, many of whom have been there for a long time, be considered in deciding how to develop these units, whether it's multiplex or two individual houses. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Appreciate.
Appreciate those.
Thank you.
Is there any? Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we'll unmute David Pearl.
Hi, Mr. Pearl, are you online with us?
Hey, can anyone hear me?
Hi, David.
Hi, sorry about that. I had wireless headphones on. They didn't seem to be working. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, sorry about that. Yes, so I am David Pearl. I'm at 12 Boothroyd, which is pretty much diagonal of the proposed site here. I'm just going to speak on, kind of shadowing what Craig and some of the other neighbors have already mentioned. I'm much more in favor of this proposal compared to what was shown to us back at the end of 2020 into 2021, I believe. I think it is going to be much more keeping with the look and feel of the neighborhood, having two forms, if you will, that look much more like houses as opposed to one singular six-plex unit. Going a little bit further, just my only real concern with this, and I know it's not something really mentioned in the variances, something you've heard from a couple of the other neighbors as well as Craig himself, but the parking concern. Boothroyd, if you do not know, is a very small, very tight, dead-end street, and right now, there is a lot of parking opportunities in this lot as it stands. The resident of 15 Boothroyd is actually able to let a few neighbors park in this shared right-of-way, as well as there are three parking spots and a triple-car garage on the site currently. So I know right now, we're just talking about variances, and Craig himself said that what we're seeing in the proposed site plan isn't finalized. They're showing two parking spots on there, but I would really like to strongly encourage the committee as well as Craig. I know he mentioned he's going to look into it, but the idea of only having two spots, especially if these are going to be proposed as multi-unit houses, I think is just not going to really provide adequate parking opportunities for these two houses, especially if we're talking about multi-unit houses. Right now, at the current apartment, all three parking spots are taken up by the three tenants living there. So I think it's fairly safe to say that, as much as we don't want to be in a car-reliant city, we're still very much dependent on vehicles. So two parking spots, I really don't think would cut it in this case, and I would really like to see more parking worked out in the future, as well as take into account the shared parking already back there that 15 Boothroyd is offering, just to make sure that that isn't impacted going forward. But that's really my own concern here, especially when we think about things like the winter. Boothroyd Avenue is not a street that gets plowed all the way through just because it is so tight. So that takes up even more parking spaces just due to all the snow. So again, I'm really just coming here to advocate for better parking solutions, but at the end of the day, I think architecturally and as a better way to use this massive piece of land, I don't see any problem with splitting it down the middle and building two house-forms as opposed to one multi-level unit. So I'm in favor of that. Just please, think about where the cars are going to go. That's all for me. Thank you.
Any questions? Speaker?
Through you, Mr. Chair, we'll go back to Craig Rais.
Yes. Thank you, sir. If Seth could pull up our site plan sketch, that might be helpful. With respect to parking, it is our intention to maximize parking on the subject properties. Now, we will be up against soft landscaping requirements and other provisions that are likely to limit the amount of parking that's even possible on this site to maybe three spaces. But certainly for operation of the site, more is more when it comes to that, and it is our intention to maximize it. The comments from the neighbors were very well received, that the existing shared driveway right-of-way, which is at the bottom of the property on screen here, provides access to three car parking areas in the site to the south, 15 Boothroyd. It's our intention to keep that in place. That right-of-way is fully entitled to the mutual benefit of the neighbor, and we could not disrupt that access if we wanted to. So we think parking is, you know, it's a focus for us and something we are trying to do our best job on. At the same time, we're a short walk from a bus stop that's 24 hours and a slightly less short walk to a subway on Danforth. This is a very bike-appropriate area. Like, Leslieville does very well for people who don't own cars, so we think we're hitting a happy medium. I think that was really the only comment. I do wish to thank the neighbors, who were very helpful in their comments on this. The committee members may recall this site from its first go-around in 2021. When the apartment building was approved, there was quite a lot of neighbor opposition, which was understandable. In 2021, it was a different world, and an apartment building made more sense. The fact that the E-HAN policies have allowed these new house types to come into reality are something we're very thankful for, and thankful for the neighbors, who are obviously in preference to see this get built rather than what's currently approved. Happy to answer any other questions. Thank you, sir.
Yes, please go ahead, Mr. Reed.
Thanks, Chair. The one question was raised by the neighbor across the street is regarding the tenants. Is there any tenant relocation plan that you are anticipating?
Yes, thank you. So technically speaking, there's no required rental replacement for the existing building. It's too small. However, the typical tenant protections will absolutely be observed. The existing tenants have been informed of this application. Minimum notices will be met or exceeded, as will any required payments or timelines for relocation. There are currently only two tenants in the building, I believe, one of whom is already planning to move out for no reason related to this. So I believe there's only one tenant who will be affected by this, and we will absolutely respect their rights.
All right, thanks.
Just on that, I was thinking about the same thing in terms of whether you were triggering any rental housing demolition. Are you saying that the unit is too small to fall into that regime?
Yes, the existing building is only three units, so it's too small to require a rental replacement provision, which again, would still require tenant relocation. However, we're not required to replace any units like-for-like in this development, even though it's absolutely our intention to do that, and still get the density that's approved just in a new typology.
All right, thanks. Other members?
What question? Is the applicant familiar with the staff report that was submitted by staff?
Yes.
And their concerns with regard to the front lot lines? Do you have kind of any commentary or response to the resulting, it looks, I think they're six-foot wide. Sorry, I have to go back to the drawings you submitted. But the front, the front, I guess, I don't know, was it six feet, 11 inches, or five feet, 11 inches each?
Yes, that's correct. That's the portion abutting the public right-of-way.
Correct.
You hopefully will recall, or if Seth could pull up, the proposed site plan sketch and front yard access diagram we shared. We did absolutely take those comments under advisement from planning staff, and we are creating additional right-of-ways that will mutually entitle the front yard for both properties. So this is something that we believe is necessary to ensure construction for the site, as well as future operations, will be entitled for the north lot. So you can see the hatched area across the front of Lot 2 and in the side yard between the two houses. That will be an additional right-of-way that protects the access planning has a concern with. There were other staff reports, too. I'm sure you're interested in the MetroLinks one, we're completely fine with, we're within the development boundary and will comply with their requirements. Similarly, transportation, right-of-way, and forestry, we're accepting of all their conditions. We've been working with all those departments throughout the design process and accept any conditions they wish to impose.
I just want to clarify something, and perhaps my thinking is not quite right. When you showed like an area map, I think you said that these two lots, if they are created, would actually be larger than any of the other lots in the area?
That is correct. Both lots will be the two largest lots in our study boundary, which was the entire surrounding block. The only exception to that is, I think, 66 Bolby, which is like an infill townhouse site, but it's larger than every other property within a typical radius.
All right, thank you. And then, just in terms of commenting agencies, et cetera, it seems that urban forestry has a condition, a condition number two. Are you aware of that and prepared to accept it?
Yes, sir, absolutely. We love trees.
Okay. Any further questions, members? All right, thank you, sir. We'll take this into committee for discussion, et cetera. Anyone care? Thank you.
I can start off, Joe, thanks. I think this is a really good proposal. I was on the panel for the previous application for this site, and there was significant concerns from the neighbors, and I was pleasantly surprised to hear almost uniform support for this go-around. And so I think that's admirable. I mean, it's rare that we have a refusal request from planning, and we do here, but I don't know. I think they didn't provide enough reasoning for me as to why this is not satisfactory. Like, I know they say the lot lines or the lot frontage is not consistent with the neighborhood, but this lot is not consistent with the neighborhood. I think this is a very good redevelopment, and I think the access is clear and the right-of-ways are there to provide good access for construction and ongoing living. So those are, I'm going to support it.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Also, I agree with Mr. Reed on this. It's rare that I, you know, a refusal from planning I take very seriously. I think in this case, but I agree with Mr. Reed. The lot itself is quite unusual for the street, and while I do agree that the individual frontages are smaller than what's typical in the street, I think there has to be consideration for what the effective impact is from the street. I mean, even though the lot line is of a certain frontage, I think effectively, when you're on the street and you look at these houses, I think they meet the standard, certainly in terms of fit. So I fully support Mr. Reed's comments, and I'm happy to second any motion that he likes to bring forward.
Comments?
Just one comment. So again, like, this is an odd one, because usually it's the opposite, where there's contentious issues with the neighborhood and city staff is silent or supportive. We have the opposite here.
It's the opposite.
The city staff is not pleased with the application, but the neighborhood. The only thing that I, is on the plan, a draft subdivision plan, I think the thing that's missing is means of access to the northern parcel. There's no right-of-way, meaningful right-of-way in my mind, that gives, effectively, almost landlocks the northern parcel for vehicles and for other things, since the two will be effectively severed. So maybe, I don't know, maybe we can ask the applicant about that, but I just don't understand how a vehicle, based upon this plan of subdivision, will get access to their property, because right now, they can't.
If I understand correctly, there is no variance triggered for parking in this case. I don't know, the parking, as far as I understand, is not a requirement, and if there was no vehicular access, then perhaps there would be a variance that would get triggered for that?
Yeah, so that's my only kind of conundrum here, is that, you know, parking's a premium on this street. Parking probably would be required for a fourplex. How are you going to park the cars? And right now, the current Part I and Part II plans don't provide a means for a vehicle to get to Part II. So, I don't know. That's my comment. It's my only conundrum. Maybe that's what staff were suggesting when they talked about in their commentary, if I may jump into it, was concerns about the proposed front lot lines will not allow for adequate access. So maybe I'm kind of on the same page with that, just for consideration for this group.
And Isola, do you want to comment?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. I understand that, sorry. I understand that this lot is one of the largest lot in the street, and I understand that this two design properties, two design buildings are designed very nicely regarding the lot size, but I still have concern regarding the proposed lot frontage line. My comment is more aligned with the city staff comment, that although it is larger parcel, but it have a very short lot frontage, and therefore, I don't believe that this is a good proposal for this lot.
All right, thank you. And members, so I understand, so it does seem lot frontage is just under six feet in Imperial, right? Yeah. It's a more difficult one, as you say, we don't often say a planning staff report that's calling for refusal, and we're thinking the other way. Anyway, enough of that. Happy to take a motion on this.
I'll bring a motion, Chair. Yeah, and just to your point, I know the frontage is very small, but I think it's, for me, it's important to remember that the width is very, the width of the lot is seven meters, right? There's a little choke point, but these are very still generous lots. Anyway, for the reasons I said before, I'm going to move approval of the application, subject to urban forestry condition two. I think there's two of those, the MetroLinks warning clause, transportation, and yeah, and obviously not the community planning recommendation.
I'll second that motion.
All right. All in favor for that approval with those conditions? All right. All right. And Mr. Gogan, you heard dissent?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. So it is a three-two vote to item, Deputy Secretary of Treasury.
Through you, dissent?
Yes.
Yeah, dissent, and Paul Gogan is dissent.
Yeah. Okay.
You dealing with item number 18 now?
Yes, can I start?
No, not yet. We still have to introduce the application.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, we had a little administrative delay. All right, item 18, yes. 29 Mountain View Ave. Here's the purpose of the application. It's to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a complete third-story addition, a one-story rear addition, a front-covered porch, a side landing with stairs, a rear-ground floor deck with stairs, as well as a rear basement walkout. The existing front porch will be demolished, and the existing ancillary building, which is a shed, will be maintained and altered. Really has the following. We have minutes from October 11th last year, October 11th, 2023. We have a plan of survey or buy-site plan. We have a covering letter from Marina Fencham, and we have a staff report from, staff report from planning, planning and development, yeah. Oh, I see, from TTC, excuse me. Report from TTC. altered. Really has the following. We have minutes from October, October eleventh last year, October eleventh, twenty twenty-three, with a plan of survey or by-site plan. We have a covering letter from Marina Fensham, and we have a staff report from, staff, a staff report from planning, planning and development, yeah. Oh, I see, from TTC, excuse me, report from TTC. In opposition, we have a number of letters in opposition from various persons, and I'll just, I'll mention the streets, a number of addresses on Mountain View Avenue, and just checking that. Okay. There'd be eight or nine letters and correspondence that are in opposition. Those are from persons who are on Mountain View Avenue. Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online. We also have two registered speakers online. We also had the residents at twenty-four Condor Avenue and twenty-seven Mountain View Avenue register to speak. We've made multiple attempts, but we have not been able to reach them.
I see.
At this time, we'll unmute the agent.
My name is Marina Lombard Fensham. I'm the applicant, Think, Giraffe Design, sixteen South West Springs in Lancaster. And I'm going to ask you if you can show the drawings we submitted, starting with the site plan. My clients, at the time of the first variance application in two thousand and twenty-two, prepared by another firm, were new in Canada and not familiar with the intent of zoning bylaws in Toronto, and interactions with neighbors were conflict-ridden. I proposed to them when I was retained in two thousand and twenty-three to create an alternative proposal that I will meet with the immediate neighbors to the north and the south in person. I did so in last summer and reviewed the proposed site plan, plans and elevations for a narrower new home by six feet from what you have now, with a one-story rear family room, to ensure that sun is not blocked, especially to the north neighbors. I explained during this meeting that the zoning applicable law review confirmed that onsite parking is required. During this meeting, the neighbors strongly suggested that we do not demolish the existing house due to the proximity to their houses. I shared this concern with my clients, who agreed to keep the existing exterior walls, even though the house will be less energy efficient than the ICF they had hoped for, and construction will be more cumbersome and costly. I submitted this revised plan, keeping the existing shell for the variance application. To the surprise of our zoning examiner, I had to defer the October two thousand and twenty-three variance, since the planner did not agree with the required onsite garage parking we had provided, and we had numerous complaint letters from neighbors despite the redesign of the project to retain the exterior walls. After the variance was tabled last year, we went back to the drawing board and made the changes you see today. Please show A three oh three side elevation south. The garage was replaced with a bike and recycling, with bike and recycling rooms. The rear wall on the second floor and attic was pulled back five feet so that the north neighbors can have maximum sun exposure. The rear family room is only one story with a flat roof. We flipped the basement access to the south to ensure more privacy for the north neighbors, who have a patio at ground level. We eliminated the walkout green roof from the second-floor master bedroom, since the north neighbors did not feel comfortable with the green, with the green roof concept and thought it would look messy. Please show A three oh one front elevation. The style, roof slope, and window type, as well as the stone and wood siding, are in keeping with the streetscape. There are comments that the house will appear too big, but note that we require no sidewall or roof height variances. The roof slope angle to the sides will also ensure more sun between the houses. We conducted more neighborhood consultation. I emailed invitations to all the neighbors who have attended previous information meetings, to a Zoom meeting on Thursday, January the twenty-fifth of this year. This meeting took place before we reapplied for today's variance meeting to show good faith and a willingness to further edit the project. I sent this set of drawings to all invited for review in advance of the meeting. In my view, the meeting was civil and went well, with all questions, where all questions were reviewed in detail. I was disappointed, however, that only six neighbors presenting four households showed up. I'm taken aback by the number of complaint letters, since no one I emailed all the information in January contacted me since then with any questions, suggestions, or concerns. I've conducted extensive neighborhood consultations in the past, and one of the most challenging was for an eight-story apartment building adjacent to townhomes. In that case, the planners and I could engage in constructive consultation and editing, resulting in almost unanimous support. With twenty-nine Mount View, I'm not sure that any changes we make will result in approval from neighbors. I'm asking myself if we would have seen such opposition if the owners had been a friend of the family, or family of someone on the street instead of a newcomer. This street is under siege from developers. My clients and some of the...
All right, just in, just in, yes, you're under five minutes, so I just got to ask you to sum up very quickly in thirty-five minutes.
Okay. My clients agreed repeatedly to significant changes. I'm not sure what else I can cut. I leave it in the hands of the committee to consider the application in a neutral and impartial way.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the application? No. All right. So we could go to the first speaker.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We're going to unmute Edward Adlerz.
Miss Palowski. She is on the phone, although she's being told, she's aware that you, you're under the impression that she's not available. She is on the phone. So perhaps you might want to take a look on that channel, if you will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members, and good afternoon, members of the committee. My name is Edward Adlerz. I am the owner and resident of number twenty-five Mount View Avenue. For the record, I have been asked to speak on behalf of several other neighbors. They are numbers twelve, twenty-eight, thirty, thirty-three, thirty-five, thirty-six, forty-seven, and forty-nine. All of them have submitted letters of opposition to the committee. So I stand before the committee for the third time now in opposition to a nearly identical request for variance in a redevelopment plan for twenty-nine. I use the term nearly identical because this proposal, like the first and second versions, still fails to address the fundamental issue that is driving opposition within the neighborhood, and that is, a proposal that is excessive and not in line with the general intent and purpose of the city's plan and bylaws, calls for a variance that is not minor in nature, and simply is not desirable for the development of the land in question. So I'd like to ask that the committee reject this request for variance and conclude this matter once and for all. First, I'd like to address the FSI, however. The applicant proposes a large ground-level extension that, when combined with other changes to the property, will increase the maximum permitted FSI from point six-nine to point nine-seven, which is a substantial forty-one percent increase on its own. However, I'd also like to point out to the committee that the point nine-seven calculation, by the applicant's own admission, does not include the area designated as a bike and recycling room. I will point to point number three of Bylaw five-six-nine dash two-zero-one-three, section's ten dot five dot forty dot forty, which outlines areas that may be excluded from the FSI calculation. And now, while it does specify that garage spaces may be excluded, it does not specify areas resembling the bike and recycling room as proposed by the applicant. So as a result, it's reasonable to conclude that this area should have been included in the calculation, and that the actual FSI that they are proposing is even greater than point nine-seven. Now, when I use the applicant's own numbers and I recalculate the FSI on my own, adding in the additional eighteen-point-two square meters of floor space, that comes up to one point zero four. So I submit that the resulting FSI variance request is not minor in nature, and it should be rejected. My second point is in regards to the desirability and general intent. I submit to you that the rear addition is inconsistent with the general intent and purpose concerning density, setbacks, and compatibility with the neighborhood's characteristics. It is not desirable development for the land in question and should be rejected. The structure will occupy a large majority of the backyard space, reducing the distance to the eastern boundary from seventeen-point-five meters down to seven-point-four meters, and that is a substantial fifty-eight percent decrease. And has been, and as has been noted, the remaining area must also accommodate a pre-existing utility shed. So in short, members of the committee, most of the rear yard, and if you do the rough math, it's about seventy-four percent, will be occupied by structure, reducing greenscape and setting a negative precedent for future development in the area. The addition will negatively impact the neighboring homes. It would be similar to building a large intrusive wall facing neighboring lots that reduce visual sightlines, sunlight exposure to the house on the north side. It will also dramatically reduce the green space available for natural water drainage and water management, which, as we all know, is currently a topic of discussion at City Hall. In fact, this concern was also raised in the September twenty-seventh letter that was mentioned by the chair earlier to this committee from the Director of Community Planning, in which the planning staff recommended that the committee refuse the application. So approving this proposal will contradict the city's own efforts on this matter. It will also undermine the rest of the neighborhood residents' good-faith efforts to maintain their green spaces and their water sheds. So before I conclude, I would like to stress again that, for the third time, we are debating the same proposal that fails critical tests. It ultimately boils down to the fact that, from the very beginning, the applicants purchased a property that cannot support their development ambitions. We are repeatedly being asked to force the proverbial square peg into a round hole with negative consequences for the surrounding neighborhood. We must ask ourselves respectfully, how many more times will we have to debate the same issues, wasting not only our time, but the committee's time and resources as well? And with that, I once again urge you to reject this proposal once and for all. I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Just see if any members want to ask a question at all. Okay, thanks, Mr. Adler. We'll go on to another speaker.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We will hear from the owner at thirty-one Mount View Avenue.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, thanks. I just wasn't sure who the person is.
My name, sorry, my name is Mary Tzamis, and I live with my family at thirty-one Mount View Avenue.
Okay. Thank you. Yes. Go ahead, Mary.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair, and members of the Committee of Adjustment. Thank you for the opportunity to once again present our concerns. As I said, my name is Mary Tzamis, and my family and I live at thirty-one Mount View Avenue, a nineteen-thirteen century home immediately north and adjacent to the applicant's. The applicant's representative, Ms. Marina Fensham, arranged a Zoom call with us and some of the neighbors on January the twenty-fifth in two thousand and twenty-four, not for our suggestions and concerns, but just to inform us of their plans. We have a major concern with the proposed increase in house size and scale. The lot does not support such an increase, and it is not in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, nor the original intent of the Bylaw five-six-nine dash two-zero-one-three regarding floor space. The large proposed ground floor, first floor extension, in addition to other proposed changes, will increase the permitted FSI from zero-point-six-nine to zero-point-nine-seven. As Edward indicated, this is forty-one percent higher than the limit. The permitted floor space requested by the applicant is not only higher than it is permitted, but is actually even increased from the zero-point-nine-two that was requested in their October two thousand and twenty-three submission. Documentation provided by the applicant states that the ground-level bike room and garbage and recycling previously called the garage. In October submission, the second-floor voids were not calculated as part of the FSI. FSI calculations for residential zones state that parking spaces may be excluded, but they do not exclude areas like the proposed bike room and garbage and recycling. It is important to understand that because of these changes, the FSI of zero-point-nine-seven presented in their current application should be increased further by an additional eighteen-point-five-eight meter squared to incorporate these new rooms as per their plans. With the inclusion of the bike room and recycling, the FSI would likely be brought to over one. The requested variance is significantly higher than stated and should be rejected. The proposed extension in the above-ground deck leaves very little green space between the structure and the already-existing shed in the backyard. The homes on Mount View generally have front and back yards with soft landscaping and grass backyards. The proposed structure does not complement existing homes. An extension of this length would also be detrimental, as it could create potential drainage issues and a heat island for neighbors. We have lived here for almost twenty years and bought our property in part due to the view of trees and open sky to the south. If permitted, our property would be subjected to adverse shadow effects, significantly limiting the sunlight which comes through our existing lower east and south-facing windows. Our architecture is unique in that we have no north-facing windows and have no rear windows from the kitchen. Our kitchen has only one window, which allows direct sunlight to flow in, and affords us a limited view of the surrounding trees and sky. The kitchen is our main living area, where we and our children spend the most time together. The shadow caused by the extension would also negatively affect our dining room, bathroom, and family room. Proposed extension would completely block the feeling of openness and present us with a consistent view of a large concrete wall. It would also leave us mostly in shadow for the majority of the daylight hours. This, of course, will limit our enjoyment of the property and negatively impact our quality of life. The proposal also calls for a second-floor flat rooftop with sliding doors from the master bedroom, as well as a lower-level patio extending even further into the lot. We have privacy concerns regarding the roof overlooking onto our property and into our immediate-adjacent bedroom windows. The flat roof has a walkout, allowing space to act like a terrace. Furthermore, the large deck constructed deep into the property is quite obtusive. It does not allow for neighboring garden and deck enjoyment, with even modest privacy to be maintained. The expected height of the fence would cast further shadow into our lot and garden. No such elevated deck extends so far back in any of the other lots on this side of the street. The extension is not reasonable within the neighborhood, does not meet the thresholds for Bylaw variance exemption, is highly undesirable, will have a significant negative impact on our rightful enjoyment of our property regarding view, privacy, light and air, and openness of the environment, and should not be allowed. In summary, we hope the committee will recognize that the variance exemption is not a minor variance. Proposal is not desirable for the appropriate development or use of the land in our building, is incongruous and not appropriate for the lot size, is not suitable for the intended land use, is detrimental in effect on neighboring homes, character and streetscape, and is not in the community's interest. Thank you for your time and consideration. Respectfully, Evelyn Christian, Mark Payne, and Mary Tzamis.
All right, thank you. Do we have another speaker?
Any questions for the speaker? Nope. Okay, through you, Mr. Chair. We're going to unmute two phone numbers to see if we can find the resident at twenty-seven Mount View Avenue. Hello? Is this Wanda? You've been unmuted. Hello? Let's try the next one.
I'm here.
Hi, is this Wanda?
I'm, yes, this is Wanda, and I've been waiting, and I told the woman who I spoke to yesterday that I wanted to speak.
Okay, that's fine. We have you on.
All right, I'm speaking. All right.
State your first and last name and your address, okay?
Right. My name is Wanda Palowski, and I'm the owner of twenty-seven Mount View, which is right next door to the subject property that we're talking about. And I've lived here for sixty-seven years. I oppose this development because it is not a minor variance. This is the third time I've opposed this development due to the size of the rear extension. Now, this extension is too large and will take up most of the remaining rear lot area. There will be little green space left for water drainage, creating the potential for spilling onto my lot and possibly damaging my property and foundation. The proposed extension and deck will leave very little... two walking spaces, they're approaching this shed, which is like a bunkie, a cottage bunkie, and they've got another room back there. There is no space left for green space for putting in flowers, like she, like the owner said she was so happy to make flowers. This is a major change, and I request that you not accept this variance because it's just wrong. After three consecutive applications have been submitted for the large extension at the rear, the current architect could not convince the owners to change the dimension of this extension. I ask the committee to make a final decision and reject this proposal. Now, last time, one of the committee members mentioned this rear extension was an issue. But then someone from the committee or the architect asked for a deferral. So remember that. Please look at the dimensions of the rear extension. The applicant's request for the variance is major. Therefore, I request that the committee reject this request for variance. And I would like to tell the architect that it has nothing to do that the new owners are new and don't know anybody. It's this proposal of this long extension at the back that is the issue. And I'm done. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Wanda. Members, any questions? Wanda? Thank you, Wanda.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We'll go back to the agent.
Yes.
Okay. With regards to the second-floor walkout and the privacy to the neighbors, you will recall that I just summarized, and if you look at the drawings, that walkout has been eliminated. There's no deck, there's no railings. If you look at the rear elevation, there are only windows on the second level. There is no master bedroom doors going to any walkout that had been removed. Also, I mentioned that the addition, that is the rear addition. You can see it's just the rear view, it's just windows with no rooftop deck. You can also see I indicate wood siding. As I sat with the neighbors at their patio in the rear, I undertook that there would be no concrete. I have no concrete walls, they will be looking at wood siding. And as you know, where I've multiple times mentioned how this design was driven by sun. I stood in the kitchen with a neighbor and showed her, I showed her what the roof height is going to be, and how over top of that, she will still be able to look south and see some trees in the distance. Also, the calculation of the unheated recycling and bike area, that was not my calculation. That was done during the zoning review. I did not make that decision. I do not decide the FSI. It would be the zoning reviewer who decides that. When it talks about drainage and topography, I had my clients do a topos survey, where we got all the heights, and if you look at the plans I have, I'm showing all the topography heights. We have a lot drainage to the front, and that it is quite clear that we have no intent for any drainage issues. On the front, if you zoom in, actually, if you go to the site plan, you will see in a dotted line, we are removing the front porch and the actual hard service, surface that has been proposed. If you look at the front yard, where you now see porch, we are going to have 81% green space. So we are actually, our front elevation is set back from the neighboring porch, right? We are, we are moved back from that. So, I have no interest in creating drainage issues, and we do not foresee that that will happen. When you talk about the size of the rear addition, you can see we have no variances for that. It 100% meet all of our, all bylaws in relation to setbacks, rear yard setbacks, and so forth. And so, from that point of view, we decided to be, you know, to not even ask for any variances for the rear addition.
Great. Thank you. Are you finished? Well, I miss you. You actually had one minute left, but.
Oh, okay.
Are you, that's fine. Have you made your submissions then?
Yeah, yeah, I can just say people have to keep in mind that where you had a front porch, you now have a rear deck. I've just switched it out. You now have a lot more green space in the front. And so if you look at the total lot, you know, how the lot is going to read from the street, it would actually read as much more green than it does now with a hard surface.
Thank you, I understand that. Any questions for the application here? All right, seeing none. All right. Thank you, members. I think that's the end of speakers. Let's bring that inside for a little discussion. Okay? Anybody want to sound off us? It is, it is just FSI, but, yep.
I'll add a comment.
Thanks, Paul.
This is interesting, because all the time when we're asking for increased FSI, it's usually a two-story or two-and-a-half-story addition. The overlook issues and all kinds of things. This one has, is unique in the sense that it is asking for a substantial FSI increase, but it's a single-story addition, no overlook. It's compliant with all other related setback requirements that the applicant said. So this is, this is tricky in that sense. And there are other buildings that are two-and-a-half, three stories nearby, so. And I didn't participate in the earlier session where this was sent to further or previous discussions, but I'd be interested to hear other applicants. I don't, I don't find this one, I find this minor, to be honest. I noticed the issue about the neighbor.
Your microphone, so you'll have to.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Do you have to say all again? Okay, I'm sorry, everyone, my mic was off. My comment was that in similar applications we've seen in the past, although all applications are different, with similar FSI requests, a lot of times there are two stories, there's overlook issues, and there's also setback and related issues. And this one is unique in the sense that it has, other than the FSI request, it's compliant with all other related bylaws, and it has no overlook issues. I assume it has no overlook, as of being a one-story addition. So I find that it's unique in that sense. And so, I, so my, from my perspective, even though from, and it's compliant with the green space or, or green space requirements, I do find this minor. And that's, I will support this application.
Thank you for those comments. Yes, Charleston.
I would, I would agree with my colleague. I do think this is a bit of a challenging application. You know, I agree with everything he said. I am hung up, however, on the, I guess, on the test as it relates to fit. And, and that mainly kind of relates to the applicant's desire to construct a three-story front main wall or a three-story addition on the streetscape. I, I, just looking at the immediate context on Mountview Avenue, there are no buildings, there's not a single house on the street that has a three-story front main wall. There are examples, there are a few examples whereby there's a two-story front main wall disguised by a mansard roof. But in this case, I think it kind of falls, because it falls on, on that threshold, it actually, I would consider this very much a three-story front main wall. And I, for that reason, I have, I have some issue with respect to the GFA in the way that it's being deployed, particularly as it relates to OP policies that speak to character, fit, and built form features of the street.
Yes, please.
Yes. Through you, Mr. Chair. I listened to all the neighbors' opposition and carefully listened to applicant and read the cover letter that very nicely outlined all the modification and all the changes that they provided during this design, and it's completely show that they will try to communicate with neighbors. I mean, we, I've heard some of the neighbors have problems regarding, for example, drainage, topography. Those are not the things that we deal in this committee. We are having an application with only one variance, and this one variance is less than one and a half times of FSI they requested, which is really minor when they want to keep the existing house and then add some addition to this. It's, this application is very minor because it does not, although some of the neighbors believe that it just, it's too big, or some, I got some of the oppositions say, talk about the, the less landscape. But the, the application which is in front of us have no height variance, no side yard setback variance, no front yard setback variance, no back, nothing. It's just asked for a simple one variance of FSI, and I think the designer done a very good job to keep part of the, the resident and add to create the space they, they applicants need. I'm, agree with one of, one of my colleagues, but I believe it's really minor. And I think it will be beneficial for everyone if the staff can put the cover letter that the applicant submitted for this hearing, then, then it will very nicely outline what was the modification. I think in this, I'm referring to this cover letter that the applicant explained what was the revision that they made, and so they did revise the front yard green space, they did revise the, the second one is minimum side yard setback, they, they just revised that one. The next page, the height of all main wall facing side lot line, they also revised that. And then there is a good list on the bottom that additional change that they do considering the neighbors' concern. So I understand that some of the neighbors have concern about, again, drainage or other things, which is not the matters for this panel. We are just dealing with variance. Therefore, I'm really believe this is really minor. And regarding the fit to the neighborhood, I mean, this is not a design in a neighborhood designation and official plan. And I think by law, they can go to three-story, and we don't have any variance for that. That's my, my comment.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Chair. I, I agree with Paul and Nazella. I think this is minor. I'm not going to go over all the points again, I think they made them well. The only thing I would add is just the context. This is a literal stone's throw from a subway stop, and five doors up across the street are high-rise, high-rise apartments. So I think this is an eclectic street that, that can take more density.
All right, would someone, Chair, put a motion before this? Yes, Nazella?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. I'm, I'm ready to put forward a motion to approve this application, and I would also like to have one condition of TTC. TTC have a report dated, just hold on a second, dated April 26, 2024, and they had like four condition that they, they would like us to include, and that's my motion.
Thank you. Secretary for that motion? Yes, Paul? All right. A revote on that.
All in favor?
All in favor? Opposed?
Very dissent. Very, very dissent, okay. Yep. Good.
The motion is moved as approved.
Thank you, Chair. All right. I'm proposing we can move on to 19, Secretary for Chair. Then, then we might have a short comfort break. It's 3:30, I'm thinking, and we came back in at 2:00. So, just, just my thought. So we can move to 18, 20 Chestnut Park.
Item number 20, 19, 20 Chestnut Park?
Yes. Just, thank you. I'll just get to the materials that we have on that. All right, in this application at 20 Chestnut Park, just going to, yeah, okay. Purpose of this item is to alter the existing three-story detached dwelling by constructing a one-story side addition to the existing attached garage budding Rowan Wood Avenue. There will be three parking spaces within the garage on this lot. Committee has before it copy of minutes from November 29th, '23, so last year's public hearing, copy of the plan of survey covering a letter by Salvatore Creamy as agent, commenting agencies. We have, we have transportation services. Opposition, there's correspondence opposition from James Archer at AD Clooney Drive. I believe that's, yes, that's, that's.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have Sal Creamy online, no registered speakers for this item. At this time, we'll unmute the agent.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Committee of Adjustment, Committee of Staff, and attending public. My name is Sal Creamy. Address is 2572 Eglington Avenue West.
All right, thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Would you like me to begin a brief presentation?
Yes, that'd be good. Just, I'm just calling up electronically. Okay, I've got the, got the application here. Yes, given the time, please be concise. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll make it brief. As you can see in the minutes, previously, we were here with a detached garage. We've made improvements as a result of conversation with various city staff agencies. Now it's a one-car addition, which is consistent with other examples along Rowan Wood. The direct neighbor to the east is three, it's a two-car, but very wide two-car. And then again, further along west, along Rowan Wood at 52 is another example of a three. It's a two, but presents as a three because of how wide it is. And we did our best to respect the soft yard landscaping. And I did read the letter of opposition. We are doing our absolute best to still maintain what the impetus of the original application was, with the exception of reducing the living space, which we thought would have been a good addition. And another tree will be planted after the construction to replace the private tree that is being removed. Respectfully, those are the comments I feel are pertinent to the application, and I open it up to the Committee of Adjustment for any questions that you may have. Through you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Members, any questions or issues you want to raise on this? So I'm just sort of thinking aloud, you know, it's, there certainly is an increase on the, the building length and the building depth. I don't know what kind of, I guess, rear yard. Let's just have a look at that. Yeah, okay.
May I make a brief comment?
Yeah. Yeah, for sure. Yeah, stretching back there, it seems. Yeah.
It, like, we're maintaining existing, we'll call it rear main wall line of the rear garages, going no further out. I mean, it's an irregular lot line, which is why we're triggering a new revised depth and rear yard setback variance as compared to the previous approval on the property. So the previous decision, or the, or garage, and because of that irregular lot line, we're triggering new variances. But fairly consistent with how far it's going back already, and just really extending in a line. And again, and I'm not going to lie to you, the, the FSI number did take it back for me as well, but keep in mind, it's not going to be used for living space and purely storage. It is a very narrow existing two-car garage, to the owner's opinion, and that's why they would like that additional storage space for their lifestyle amenities.
Yes, thank you. Any comments or questions? All right, seeing none, all right, thank you.
Just a quick question. Just through you, Mr. Chair, quick question. What is the existing length and depth of the dwelling before you do alteration and addition?
Give me one minute. Through you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, sure.
The existing length is 27.34 for both length and depth. And sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, was there another question?
No, means that the, the variance that is before us, variance number three, length 27.36, and variance number four, building depth 29.37. Are there existing condition? Or is triggered as, after your modification or addition?
No, no, no. What, what, I, so, I know, the depth kind of taking me back as well because we're no, we're going no further back than the original application of 2014. It's the same depth and length numbers. I think between the two different examinations, depth was measured differently, so maybe we should, should have had a variance of 29 for depth on that previous application. It's being measured differently now, why it's resulting in a higher number. And the marginal increase on length, again, is due to the irregularity of the lot.
And then would you also explain the, for variance number one, the altered dwelling will be located 0.13 meter from rare north lot line? Is this also the existing situation, or is triggered after this addition?
It's an existing condition respectfully. I'm not trying to stretch the truth by any means. We have an existing detached garage that extends a certain extent back. Now, we're just erecting a one-story addition on the same line. And because of that irregular lot line, as I mentioned previously, it's triggering a more significant deficiency for the rear yard setback. But it's, it's the existing line of what is already existing on Rowan Wood.
So you just built on top of it as a second floor, correct?
To the side. Through you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. The side. Oh, yes. Thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. Chair, just, further questions, sir?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I just a question about the connection between the existing garage and the house. On the plan, just based on what's being represented, it appears that the existing garage and the house are both separate but attached, if I'm not mistaken, just given the way that it's represented. And I wonder, I don't, I, I guess, you know, my only concern in principle is, you know, with an extension of this degree. Oh, thank you. Thank you. With an extension of this degree, I just have a slight concern, not much, that this, you know, there has to be some consideration that if we allow this sort of building depth, whether or not this can be eventually, this garage can be converted as part of the actual dwelling and not as a, a separate garage. Because I look at the built form and the immediate context, and while there are a lot of garages, they tend to be separate detached structures from the dwelling, and I understand there's a bit of a unique situation with respect to this particular lot and the way that it's laid out. But I just want to also make sure that in allowing these variances, we're not potentially sort of exasperating a, a condition that could, could form later on throughout, through a potential conversion of the, of the space to part of the house.
Respectfully, through you, Mr. Chair, may I respond?
Yes, okay.
Um, I, I think I can, exactly, and I can respect the comments. I think, one, we can look to the existing size of the existing dwelling, that there really wouldn't need to provide additional living space. The existing dwelling has ample space for living. And if there would be any point of consolidation and maybe ease any concerns in the future, we could impose a condition that the one-story addition may not be used for habitable space. And if that was the choice of the owners in the future, it would result in a new application to the Committee of Adjustment, at which time it could be analyzed and scrutinized then. But that's not the intention of this proposal or of the owners. And I further maybe should have added, these are new owners within the past two years, if memory serves me correctly. And that's not their intention is to use this for living space.
Oh, fair, okay, fair enough. Thank you. That, the answer is very helpful.
All right, then, members, are there any other speakers? So happy to entertain motions. Here, here, go ahead.
Sure, I, I can do this. I think this is, this is actually a very modest addition to the garage. The variances do look massive, but they're basically reflecting one, three, and five, or one, three, and four existing conditions, almost. Exactly. They're, they're just minor increases to those. And I don't see any negative impact of, of just basically adding one more garage stall on, on the backside. It's, it's a common, a common feature on that, on the street to the back. So I'm, I'll move approval of the application subject to transportation condition. And I don't know if Member Allison would like a condition about, no.
Maybe I'm going down a radical. I'm, I'm satisfied that it's not, I, I don't think the intent here is.
I think, I, I think so, too. I, I didn't, I don't know if there's a forestry condition. I know there was a forestry issue, but that was on the previous application. I didn't see anything for this.
I see no condition, yeah.
Okay, so I don't see one either. So just the transportation condition.
I'm happy to second the motion.
All right, all in favor then? That's approved, now, Chair. Thank you, sir. We'll move on to.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Item number twenty, fourteen Mackenzie Avenue got deferred, so we could deal with item number twenty-one. Thirty-three Methuen Avenue.
I, I'm just gonna ask, is any member requiring a break at this time, or are we okay to go, continue? All right. Okay, thanks, members. We will go to twenty-one, thirty-three Methuen Avenue. Let's catch up here. Number twenty-three, sorry. Arundel Road, eh? We're in twenty-one, eh? Thirty-three Methuen, sorry, okay? Okay, Methuen Avenue, thank you. Thirty-three Methuen, here's the purpose, to alter the existing two-and-one-half-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear second-story addition. The existing one-story ancillary building, a one-car and storage area in the rear yard will be maintained and unaltered. So the ancillary building, all right, in the rear, can be maintained and altered. Committee has a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. There are several past decisions, it appears, from the Committee of Adjustment. And support, there's a three-signature petition in support of the application.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online. At this time, we'll unmute Sava Mikovic. No registered speakers.
No registered speaker, all right, thank you. Good to know.
Hello, Sava.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the committee. I'm the designer and owner's agent for the requested variance.
Yes, I see that there's just one variance. It's first place, sorry, four, sorry. Point zero four times and going to one point one three times. Members, do you feel, do you want a presentation to hear about that? Or, oh, okay. So, sir, I'll just ask you to, to hang on while we discuss. All right, that second-story addition and square reach. Any comment, anyone willing to put it forward, a motion?
I have a comment.
Yes?
When I look at the documentation, it doesn't look, looks like a very modest addition, but the, when you look at the numbers, it's almost, it's more than doubling the size of the existing building. So, so, so from, again, from the documentation provided, it looks like a very appropriate addition to the building. It looks like it actually tries to be contextual, even though that's not our mandate here.
Right.
So I support this application. Okay, I'll pay a motion that we approve this application. Just want to make sure I have if there's any forestry condition here. There is no forestry condition on this, so, right? Yeah, so approve it as presented.
I'm happy to second.
All right, all in favor of that approval? Sir, you've got your minor variance, it's been approved. Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We can move on to item number twenty-two, one fifty-one Dewhurst Boulevard.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. In respect of this one fifty-one Dewhurst Boulevard, the purpose is to legalize and maintain the rear basement walkout with a ground-floor concrete deck and staircase, which was constructed without an authorized building permit. Committee headed for the following communications. I have a survey, site plans, floor plans, and elevations. Four photographs of trees on the subject property, a covering letter from Graham Barrett, planning rationale from Mr. Barrett, in order to comply, no doubt relating to the building permit. And there is support, correspondence and support from Peter and Ann Harrison at one thirty, sorry, one thirty-three Aldrich Avenue, and a thirty-five signature petition in support by owners and occupants of people on Dewhurst Boulevard, Aldrich Avenue, and Summers Avenue.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online, and we do have one registered speaker in support online. So at this time, we'll unmute Graham Barrett.
Thank you. Good afternoon, committee members. Mr. Chair, Graham Barrett, SGL Planning and Design, fifteen forty-seven Bluer Street West, agent for the owners of one fifty-one Dewhurst Boulevard.
Thank you. Just pulling it up electronically. Thanks, yeah. Okay, three requested variances. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, sure. If my planning rationale could be put up on screen, that would be great. Now, I've submitted both a cover letter and a planning rationale, as you mentioned, detailing the history of this. And I'm happy to go through it again, as it is somewhat complicated, but really, SGL has been retained to speak to the planning issues. So any questions regarding the history of this application should probably be directed to Caesar Palacio, who's the other registered speaker in support. He's been retained by the owners to help guide them through the approvals process and rectify this problem. If you go to page two of my rationale, we're here to request three minor variances to legalize and maintain the existing rear porch with cold room underneath and basement walkout. This was constructed about fifteen years ago, without the benefit of a proper building permit. All the variances are for existing conditions, and no new construction is proposed. The first being maximum lot coverage, thirty-five percent, and fifty-seven point seven five proposed. There are many homes in the immediate area with rear yard garages, which predate by law five, six, nine, twenty thirteen, and would also far exceed the thirty-five percent maximum. So this isn't unusual for the area. The minimum required side yard, point nine meters, and we're proposing point two-two meters to the north and point two meters to the south. That's for the existing porch. However, the dwelling itself, as built and as has existed for decades, would not comply with this provision. It's actually closer to both the north and south lot lines. The stair encroachment, where stairs may encroach into a required building setback if the stairs are no closer to a lot line than point six meters. The rear basement walkout is point two-five meters from the south lot line. Again, this is quite minor. And no issues have ever been reported. The adjacent neighbor is in support, along with, as you mentioned, thirty-six other neighbors who are also in support of this. This structure is very similar to porches and basement walkouts nearby, which is actually including the next, the, the house next door. If you go to page three of my planning rationale, you have a photo there highlighting the adjacent neighbor's basement walkout, and it's almost the same. There's no staff report, so that indicates to me that community planning has no concerns. And seeing as there's no construction proposed, there'll be no impact on any nearby trees. This is a supportable minor variance application that passes the four tests of section forty-five, sub-one of the Planning Act. It's quite minor. The proposal is suitable for the development of the land. It's quite similar to other porch and walkouts. I don't, I don't really need to go through the four tests. You're quite well versed in them. It is unfortunate that we're dealing with this now fifteen years after it was built, but the owners are doing everything in their power to make things right, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So the application, we're not, we're not proposing any new construction from the application. We're trying to, trying to make a decision of what's there. Is that, is that fair?
Yes, that is absolutely correct.
Anyone else? Questions for the applicant? All right, sir. All right, we'll just hang on, and all right, we'll, we'll go to the further speaker.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We will unmute Caesar Palacio, who will be speaking in support.
Mr. Chair, if I heard correctly, I believe this speaker is also here for the agent, so I don't know whether or not the additional five minutes is necessary, or obviously it's your discretion, but I might just put that.
We'll hold him to a minute. I was thinking about that. He's, he's not your average, say, like, like a resident next door or an opposite. He's, he's, he's in, he's in favor, and he's one of the advocates for it. All right, please call him up, and we'll just.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Perhaps he can just add anything further that may have been missed. So Caesar Palacio?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Is, I'm very satisfied with the presentation of Mr. Barrett from SGL, a planner. And therefore, I'm just going to withdraw is my, my speaking time at this point. And, and I'm satisfied with that. The only thing I wanted to mention is the level of support from the community. I went door-to-door with the owner, and I never seen so much support within the community. Those are my comments. Thanks so much.
Thanks very much.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Palacio, can you just state an address that you reside at?
To Liscombe, L-I-S-C-O-M-B-E Road.
Thank you.
New York.
Okay.
I did send that information to the committee.
We can go back to Graham?
Hi there.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Fine, any, fine. And I guess, I don't think there's any further rebuttal of that, but any quick, quick comment, and committee is going to take it into ourselves and discuss and, and move on.
I have nothing further to add. I believe we've covered everything. Thank you very much.
Okay. Members, do we have a motion on this? Yes?
I'm happy to bring a motion. I, I think that the variances that are being requested are, are pretty similar to the established pattern of building in this neighborhood. There's a lot of, as the applicant showed, there's, as the agent showed, there's examples of rear yard, rear walkouts, and, and similar coverages. I think the variances are minor and desirable for the site, so I move approval without condition.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor? Okay, sir, see unanimous approval of the application. Okay?
Through you, Mr. Chair. You can move on to item number twenty-three, ninety Enderdale Road.
Fine. Yes, thanks. Just, just calling up, so I can call that in the book. Thanks. Ninety Enderdale Road, the purpose of the application is to alter existing one-story ancillary building, a one-car detached garage, by constructing a complete second-story addition above, this ancillary building will be converted into one garden suite. Committee has before the following, copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, and ten photographs of the subject property.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we do have the agent online, no registered speakers for this item. At this time, we'll unmute the agent.
Thank you, yes.
Hello, Mr. Chair and committee members, my name is Arash Pahamin, representing the owner at ninety Enderdale Road.
Yes, thank you, I see that there are three variances, just taking a moment. Oh, yes, sort of angular plane violations, um, don't mean to sort of preempt you, well, I guess I do. I do preempt you, do, do you want to address those, because it seems to be from different sides, the, uh, just perhaps you can, uh, tell us why the angular plane, uh, whether by the, by a violation of those is reasonable in these circumstances?
Sure, so as for variance number one, and the encroachment into the forty-five-degree angular plane to the south, please note that this variance has a minimum impact to the adjacent property at south, which is the rear side of the lot at, uh, number four Chutley Road, which is the, uh, adjacent road, and facing to no buildings, so it has no, in fact, it has no impact to any buildings at the adjacent property, and it, it is only affecting the rear yard of the above-mentioned property. And regarding the variance number two, which is the encroachment into the forty-five-degree angular plane to the, uh, uh, to the east, facing the main dueling on the same property, also has no impacts to the neighbors, and it only has a minimum impact to the half width of the rear side of the main dueling of the same property.
Just that portion, okay? Yep, please proceed.
Yeah, and the third, the third variance is regarding the heights, as we are adding one story on top of the existing garage to provide the minimum livable spaces for the future dueling. The proposed height of six point twenty-nine meter is inevitable to achieve the current architectural best practices and standards. Also, given the fact that the garden suite is strategically located at the rear of the property with the special conditions of the land, with no impacts to any adjacent properties, I believe that this could be considered similar to the other two-story garden suites in terms of the height. And in conclusion, the, and given the explanations I provided, we, we believe that this application has no negative impacts to the adjacent properties, neighborhood, and the community, and the proposed variances are minor in nature with no impacts to the general intent of the official plan and zoning by law. We were also able to receive support letters this morning from the neighbors at number sixty, ninety-two, ninety-seven, and one oh six Enderdale Road, which was not possible to be uploaded to the, to the folder, however, the letters are available upon your, uh, request. We have also fully communicated the future construction management plan with the neighbors and all aware of this project, thank you.
Just, uh, while you're there, just a drawing that's up on the, uh, on the screen at the moment, I'm just trying to, uh, it seemed to be a very interesting lot configuration, uh, if, if I'm correct, very, very large L-shaped that extends, uh, in the left direction, up, up a bit. That's all in a single ownership?
Yes, that's correct, sir.
All right, okay, thank you. All right, uh, members, any questions for this applicant agent? Is any done? All right. Heard the explanations then, with respect to, um, the angular plane, and also, uh, the height of the garden suite building, I think it's the first garden suite application we've had today. Yes, please.
Yes, to you, Mr. Chair, um, this is a very, um, irregular shape, a lot, and, um, this proposal, I think, it's, it's a very good proposal, and the three variances that are, is, are be in front of us, I'm satisfied that they are minor, therefore, I would like to put forward a motion to approve this application with no condition.
Is there a second for that motion, please? Yes, from Peter, all right, all in favor, motion, all right, we have three, and one dis- one dissent from Mr. Allison, otherwise, all in favor?
Through you, Mr. Chair, uh, perhaps maybe we'll, um, deal with item number twenty-four, fifty-seven Calender Street at this time, and then we can take a five or ten-minute break.
Sounds good. All right, let's move to that item. Sorry, fifty-seven Calender Street, all right, purpose of the application here is to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story townhouse, townhouse dwelling, by constructing a rear two-story addition at the northeast portion of the building. Committee has plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, a revised zoning notice, five photographs of the subject property, a decision from twenty nineteen from Committee of Adjustment that, oh, affects a property at six Saunders Avenue, we'll have to explain, oh, and, and there's also a deferral request, but that's, that's been withdrawn, I take it, hey, matter of difference.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we do have the agent here in person, uh, no registered speakers for this item.
All right, we'll call him to the floor, I think you would. Hello, do you have the agent speaker on, oh, and right here, all right? Hiding in plain sight, all right, I'll just call up my, sorry, just gonna ask you a second, just, uh, okay. So, um, all right, I said that, and two, two variances, uh, two variances sought, so I get set back the windows, hold on, zero, okay. Hi there, okay, you have, uh, two, um, two variances requested, again, in a concise way, would you explain, uh, what you seek in your application and why?
Yes, absolutely, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, so, um, I can get into the reasons for the deferral and, uh...
Okay, perhaps you should address that, there was an earlier indication, yeah.
Yeah, so basically, um, the zoning, the zoning notice came in very late, um, way too late to confer with the zoning examiner about why he picked a much larger fore area than I had put in my, um, in my waiver, and, uh, when the owner received this, there was a kind of a panic, and there was an instant, uh, need for deferral, but then I triple-checked my numbers, and they check out, uh, to me at least, but if there is an issue, once we, um, get to that phase, we're, we're happy to revise, or if we have to, we're happy to come back to committee if it comes to that. So that was the reason for the deferral, it's just a disagreement on the numbers, um, I've triple-checked, I think they're correct, and what we're doing in this application is essentially, um, I wish, I wish the AIC had the photos of the back of the house, which were the tree photos, but it's not so important, if you went up to this house in the back, it's one of these row houses that has a very awkward, um, maybe like a three-foot wide by fifteen-foot deep, um, piece missing from the back, that was there originally to facilitate windows, and we're just filling in this piece, um, and also rebuilding some things inside, because the house is in horrible, horrible condition, crumbling, water damage, all sorts of things. So that's kind of the purpose of the application, it's pretty straightforward like that, there was a, there was a brief scare on the, um, on the zoning notice, but that's something we will, we will deal with, the zoning examiner, because we cannot, we could not reach them in the last week.
So just to confirm, you'd like to proceed today?
Yes.
You're saying if there's a sure problem, you'll, you'll deal with it, send a further applicant.
Absolutely.
Members, uh, any, any questions in the speaker, yes, please, uh...
Thanks, Chair, just one question, I, just confirming that there are no windows on fifty-seven to the year north, in the, in the slot that you're going to be filling in?
There are no windows there, and it's, it's a part, it's a partition wall, so it's shared wall, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Sure, Ozren Stambock, that's from fifteen Moreland Road.
Any further questions, members, if not, Chair be willing to listen to motions, yes?
I'll make a motion, um, for fault, it's a beautiful building, and it's worthy of saving, so it's good to see that there's some effort is being invested in it, I do find that the proposed request minor in nature, um, also in keeping with kind of the character of the building and the near neighborhood as well, so I propose that we approve this motion with no modi- with no changes.
I'll second that, Chair. All right, all in favor, none of that? Yes, that's approved, you have your approval today, sir, good luck with that.
Thank you.
With that discrepancy, right, I'm out of Secretary of Treasury, I'm just thinking maybe, I would say at least a, a ten-minute break on a seat, so we then have the, um, the agenda that was started at three-thirty, we...
Sure, we'll take a ten-minute break at this time.
Take a ten-minute break.
Thank you.
We'll start on twenty-five. Yes, thank you, yep.
Can I pick your down the four members? I just don't vote. I never, I never create a tie, so just, and, yeah, there's two of us. Larry, Larry Schwartz, he's a lawyer, and I think we're getting, we're getting another member. And Missy Herperolte just joined us, that, it was her, for her first hearing back, uh, on Thursday. Nice to have members that have experience with this, yes.
Definitely. What's that? Two more minutes.
We do have the agent for the next item available.
Okay.
Is this going to be item forty-five?
Yes, right, okay. I'm set whenever you are.
Yep.
Great. All game, we're resuming committee. We're at item number 25 and the address is 30 Delaware Avenue. Going to read out the purpose and what the city has in terms of communication. So this is to alter the existing two and one half story semi detached dwelling duplex by constructing one story additions to the south side and rear and a rear third story partial addition with a basement walkout patio, a second story deck with staircase and a third story roof deck. Committee has before to plan a survey, site plan, floor plans and elevators. We have 20 photographs of trees on the subject property. We have a covering letter from Mark Bairst, an agent. We have, were advised that there are committee decisions from it appears to be like 2012 and 23 concerning the subject property. So we'll have the agent ask about that. We'll ask him. And they also has referenced an application decision concerning 32 Delaware Avenue.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online. No registered speakers.
All right, and I'll just know, sorry, it appears to be just the single variance. Hi, good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, members of committee and attending public. Thank you for this. Yes, there is only one variance sought and that's the length of house.
And. I'm sorry, I should just sorry, just ask you to state your name and address and.
I apologize, of course. My name is Mark Bairst.
Yes, right.
And my address is 30 Delaware Avenue. So I reside at the subject property.
All right, yes, please, please proceed. It seems like, seemed like an ambitious undertaking, but there's just a depth of variance.
Yeah, it's, it's a two and a half story property now, building now. It has two units in it. The plan is, I'm a supporter of intergenerational living. My son will eventually live upstairs and the plan is for me to move to the lower two floors. Currently, the half of the ground floor and the lower level, the basement level, is occupied by a tenant. And they, they are well aware that this plan is in place and they've been with us for two years and are planning to leave. So yes, it will be a lowering of the basement, an extension of the house of 10 foot six. A little bit of a south extension, as you can see, of four feet. You can go on. These are landscape related drawings. Could you go to the next, the next drawing? One more, I think is best. Yeah, so this shows the proposed, or the proposed site plan. And my, can I point to this at all? Am I, can I take control of this? Not really, right? I'm not sure. You can see the extension at the back and to the south. And the walkout from the lower level as indicated. If you're able to zoom in, I'm not sure I can control it. Yeah, so the walkout is noted here. The roof deck will be accessed from the second floor. Currently, there is a second floor deck now. So if you go up one drawing, you'll be able to see the difference. Thank you, sir. So there is a second floor deck right now outlined here with an existing stair. So we're in fact reducing the length of the house, albeit on the second floor will only be a deck and then the, the wall of the house will come out to less of a distance than the existing approved constructed second floor deck. Maybe it's best to continue going down through the drawings for a moment. So the site plan, yeah, the basement, as it exists right now, if you go to the next drawing, you'll see how it's going to modify. So I don't intend to expand the basement to the south. We don't need the area, but there'll just be a strip building there. And you can see the walkout to the left. And if you go down, that's the expanded, extended basement. Yeah, thank you. And then one down to the extended basement, extended ground floor and its area to the south and to the west. That is the extent of my request for approval, at least with respect to a minor variance. If you'd like to look at the elevations, continue down. There's no real change to the second floor except for the addition of that deck. That's the existing south elevation with the existing second floor deck and stair as discussed and existing bay window off the second floor. You'll go down again and that's the proposed. So we'll just relocate that stair. We'll wrap the building around the existing building in a non combustible material. Not sure what it is yet, probably brick. We will have an access to the second floor unit up that stair you see along the, on the south, up to the door that you can see in the elevation. If you go back to the ground floor. Yeah, that'll do. So that'll be fine. So you can see the stair leading up to an entry that will take you up to the second floor unit. There's an existing legal parking spot and only one is required. So all I seek for you today, actually, there's one more thing I would like to show you. If you go up to the site plan, the existing site plan, I think it's, it would be important to show you that too. Couple more, one more. Yes, so on the neighboring property to the south, they're, they're, they have a building against the property line all the way to the back of the property. So we don't believe will be causing any ill effect to this property. With respect to the property to the north, the existing approved second floor deck is still not as long as their second floor deck, which is also approved. And they have a second story existing enclosed structure as well. So it's very dark under here. You can see in the pictures that I sent of the, of the tree catalog as well. Some of what that might look like. I think you'll have to go to other pages. There's a number of photographs. Yeah, so you can see the, we're looking into their backyard right now. This is the extent of their extended porch. And if we go back to the site plan for a moment. Thank you. Yeah, am I taking too much time?
A little bit, so just.
Okay, well, I think that's all there is. There's really not too much. I think it's a, yes, I feel there's not really any ill effect to the neighbors and that's, that's all I have to say.
Just one question just arising about, just again, looking at what the city has in terms of material. So you seem to reference a minor variance decision affecting 32 Delaware Avenue. I don't know if that's, must be north or south of your property. And why is that, why is that significant? What's that in there for?
Well, that references really just for consent. Part two of this property, which is next to part one, used to belong to us. And they used to have, 32 Delaware had a right of way access through our backyard, through this driveway that exists now, through our backyard to, to, to their double, what used to exist as a double car garage. Now, this has existed as two properties and two normalized kind of rectangles for over 40 years. We just codified the situation in order for me to proceed and, and ask for this minor variance. Hi, Paul.
Thanks, hang on. Members, questions? Yes, one. All right, I hang on, so no, no questions. All right, we'll take this in for discussion. My initial view is a lot happening here, but the single variance of building depth is, is not a large one. Someone willing to, yeah.
Sure, I, yeah, I think this is a nice project, Chair. I think the massing is, makes sense, particularly with the neighbor to the south being the continuous building towards the rear. It is, it's a, it's a pretty restrained addition. I think it's going to result in two quite nice units. I was wondering what all the parts were on the plan, but I guess that, that explains it with the former, former right of way. I, I think it's, it's a good plan and I think the variance, the single variance depth related is, because it's just the one story, the impacts of it are extremely minor. So I move approval without condition.
Happy to second that.
All right, Stroud's in second. All right, all in favor? That appears to be approved unanimously. All right, sir, the minor variance is granted for 30 Delaware. Go to 26 here. Somerset Avenue, all right. Moving on to 26, seems to be Somerset Avenue, just a moment. All right, infection with 26 Somerset. Here's the purpose and then we'll see just who's online for us. I'm going to alter the existing two story townhouse dwelling by constructing a rear two story addition with a rear ground floor deck and a second story balcony. The existing rear one story addition and deck will be demolished. Committee has before to plan a survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. We have an arborist, sorry, arborist report by private individuals. We have a planning report prepared by Mr. Dang of Dang Architects. We have a tree removal permission letter from Anna Lacosh at 28 Somerset Avenue. Removing, sorry, regarding tree removal, May 6, 24. So it seems that we've got adjoining neighbors that's agreeing that a tree may be removed. Commenting agencies, we have the staff report from Urban Forestry. And in terms of support, we have phone letters in support by various, various owners on Delaware Ave and Somerset Avenue.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online. No registered speakers for this item. At this time, we'll unmute Oliver Dang.
All right, thank you.
Hi, Mr. Speaker and members of the committee. Thank you for having me here. And yeah, my name is Oliver. I'm the agent for the clients at 26 Somerset. And let me know if you have any questions.
Yes. Thanks, Chair. Just looking at the variances, I, I have some concerns with the length variances being requested. Can you speak to that and why you, why you feel it's appropriate?
Sure, so, so the length, the, there's an existing rear addition that we're demolishing. The area is, is pretty small and what we're looking to do is just to increase the square footage for my clients with a growing family. And the, the total length includes a smaller one story addition. If you scroll down to the A202. Yeah, so the, the, the full length includes that little mudroom area at the back. That is just a one story addition, but that is included in the length. The two, the full two story addition starts at the, the end of the living room. That would be the full two story height. We were looking at neighboring decisions that have been made and there have been some that are approved at the same length. And so we thought this was a, an appropriate variance that matches what is being done in the rest of the neighborhood.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, further question? Yeah.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I have a little bit of concern with respect to the setback, particularly as it relates to future access. If you look at the site plan, there is a, there's a, there's a bump, a typical bump, which we're, we're used to seeing in this typology within the city. My concern is that with the proposed addition extending almost to the property line, it creates a condition whereby, you know, and you think, you know, you have to think too, you know, in terms of number 28, if they were to apply for something similar, perhaps the mirror of what's being proposed, you've almost created a bit of a very, a difficult situation with respect to a light well that has almost next to no access in between the two buildings. So I, I wanted to ask if there was any sort of plan in terms of how to service or access that space? And why, you know, at least a little bit of more of a setback was not provided on that rear addition is to facilitate the continued access of that part of the lot?
Yes, thanks for that question. We did think about that. If you scroll down to, I think, proposed Plan A202 again. There is, if you look in the dining room, there's a new tilt and turn window. So the tilt and turn windows, it, in one function, it operates, it tilts in to provide ventilation. In another turning of the operation, it turns into a door. So that will facilitate the, the access to that area. The, as you can see, the house is very, or the lot is very narrow at just over 15 feet wide. So for the addition part, gaining that space is pretty critical to make the space habitable and usable. As well, we wanted to keep, we didn't want to push the kitchen further north and take up that space to allow the neighbors to have that light and to provide that little light well between the two properties.
I might just note that there, the swing of that door is.
Right, yeah.
It requires encroachment on the neighbor's property in order to facilitate, in order to open.
Yeah. An in swing.
Yeah, so if, yeah, that might, that might have to be changed to an in swing door.
Yeah, for sure.
And may or may not, I mean, it's not sort of in our purview, but that, I don't even know if that will comply with the building code in order for egress to that space. If you have a door and it doesn't quite have a clearance in front of it for access. Anyways, I, I, maybe that's sort of going down a rabbit hole with respect to building code stuff, but from a zoning perspective, that certainly presents a bit of a challenge.
I think that is the, the challenges with these very narrow lots, especially when they're built so close together, is how to maximize the lot while also maintaining light into the property and neighboring adjacent properties. So I think that was one of the ways that we could maximize it while also maintaining some light for both properties.
And can I ask as well, with respect to the neighboring property, there are window openings and doors that are situated within there, let's call it the notch at the back? Are, I'm asking if there are or aren't. It's kind of hard to see it. There's any photos or evidence to indicate where there are openings on the adjacent property? Just given the proximity to this one?
I, I don't have any drawings or photos of the adjacent property. One second.
Okay, so you're not aware if there's any windows facing the subject property at number 26?
Oh, no, there, there are, yes.
There are some windows in there, okay.
Yeah, yeah. They are almost like mirror buildings.
Chair, do you want to continue with questions, sir?
I'm good. Yeah, thank you.
Other members, questions for the, for the agent before us? I'd be happy to entertain a motion. Yes.
I'll make a motion for this. I do agree with my peers' comment about building length, but I do, I do find it minor nature, the. The, it doesn't seem to have a significant impact on the landscape requirement. It is a very narrow lot. So I think that I would support this application, and I would move this for approval.
All right.
Forestry condition, I'm sorry. Number two, thank you.
All right, then, is there a second here for that motion with that condition? All right, thank you. All right, all in favor? Okay, okay, thank you. All right. You have that, Madam Secretary, you've got that?
Yes, we have that.
Moving on to item twenty-seven, ninety-five Arundel Avenue.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the committee.
Hi, good afternoon. Sorry, just calling something up electronically. I think I got it here, yeah.
Okay. I'm Lynn Houston, I'm the presenter.
Through you, Mr. Chair, if you can introduce the item.
Yeah, sure.
And then, yes, we do have Lynn Houston as the agent, and no registered speakers for this item.
Thank you, that's helpful, you know. So Lynn, we're just starting, yes, at ninety-five Arundel Avenue. The purpose of the application is to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story detached dwelling by constructing a front third-story addition, a front third-story addition. Committee has it before the following, a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. An earlier decision of committee adjustment I see from last year affecting the subject property. There's an arborist report and tree protection plan prepared by a private service. Commenting agencies, email, a staff report from Urban Forestry here at the city. All right. So Lynn, perhaps, just in the starting off, perhaps you just referenced that earlier minor variance decision? Something deferred or something being carried forward from that earlier decision?
Certainly. Forty-nine Oak Crest address, by the way, I know you like those. The last application had a gable roof from front to back that had the eve at the top of the third floor. Just before we went to committee, the south neighbors had a look at the drawings, and were not happy with that roof. So, but rather than interfere with the process of the committee, there was gentleman's agreement that we would come back, get rid of the variance for the excess height, and switch it to a flat roof. We're also moving the flat roof further forward to the front of the house. It was pulled back ten or twelve feet before so that the higher peaked roof would not show from the front, from the street. And that reasoning went away once we made a flat roof.
Members, any questions for Lynn at this point? Seeing none, we have, yes, sorry.
Quick comment for the applicant. I'm just looking at the east elevation drawing, number A eleven. And I wonder, I put this forward to the applicant, I wonder if there's any willingness to increase the slope, the proposed slope. You've got it at twenty-three degrees right now, which creates a bit of a mancered intersection with a front gable roof. And I wonder if there's any possibility of increasing that slopes just to, at least from my standpoint, ensure that there's more of a fit on the street with similar, let's call them half stories. The third stories that, you know, are disguised as half stories, at least from the street's gate.
Okay, I see what you mean. We were pretty much copying three houses over on Chester. But if it will be an approval to produce this slope, we're certainly open to that. What slope would we be talking about?
Specifically, you've labeled as a twenty-three degree slope.
Oh, no, I meant which number, which degree would you prefer?
Drawing A eleven, east elevation, you've marked a twenty-three degree slope. Is the intersection, is basically the way that the intersection of that third-story addition, which is coming all the way forward to the front wall, intersects with that front gable?
No, I understand your question. I was just wondering which angle would be acceptable?
Yeah, of course. Oh, the number.
The number itself.
You know, I think a slight increase to, you know, forty percent or forty, forty-five percent would be acceptable. Certainly forty percent, I think, would help to mitigate the impact of a full, what is really a third, full third-story addition and disguise it as a half. In terms of the interior space, I mean, perhaps a discussion would decline, but I don't think it affects the interior space too much. You might get a little bit more of a slope on that wall. But consider that that wall is largely mitigated by a front gable, which, you know, affords a little bit of relief on the interior.
Yeah, well, what happens right now is the front gable all the way back. If you look at eight, eight, we were actually intending on being able to see those shingles. But if, if, I actually, the clients went in the neighborhood, found a host they liked, and it was this configuration.
Fair enough. And can I just get the address that you referenced as well? You said it was a block over?
Oh, yes, it's seventy Chester.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, oh, wait, I apologize, got the wrong number. One oh seven Chester.
One oh seven?
Yes, one oh seven Chester. One oh one Chester is also very similar, and one twenty-seven Chester. So that's the look we were going for. I know it's what my clients liked, so.
Fair enough. No, it's.
Liked to stay in that neighborhood.
Of course, yeah. And certainly calling out some individual precedents helps to address some of those concerns. Thank you.
Members, any other questions or comments? No other speakers. Members, can I have a motion on this, to deal with this now?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to bring a motion, seeing as I had a bit of commentary on this one. I did have some concern with respect to the angle of slope of that third-story addition, but I'm satisfied with the applicant's response, particularly the example at one oh seven Chester. I think it presents a good example whereby it demonstrates that this certainly, that this sort of condition can fit within the existing context. Just tell me, I believe I don't see any comments from staff or forestry, so this. We have a forestry one-two, okay. So I'm happy to bring a motion to approve the subject application with a condition, standard condition of urban forestry number one and number two.
All right, second, all right, all in favor with that, those urban forestry conditions? Yes. You have your approval, Lynn. That has passed. All right, moving on to item twenty-eight, sixty A Beaumont. All right, sorry, just one of my, one of my apps, PDFs is just not opening. I'm just trying to get it going here. It'll go, well, we'll see in a moment. So number twenty-eight, sorry, sixty A Beaumont Road. The purpose of the application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by enclosing the front second-story covered balcony into habitable space. So again, enclosing the front second-story covered balcony into habitable space. Committee has planned survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. One photograph of the subject property. And commenting agencies or emails from advisory staff reports from Metrolinks, from Ravine and Natural Feature Protection. And yes, that's.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we do have the agent online, no registered speakers for this item.
All right.
At this time, we'll unmute the agent.
Yes, and I'm just going to ask for some technical help if I could, just having some difficulty opening my, reopening my PDF.
Sure, we can do that. The item is presented on the screen as well, so we're just looking at one variance for floor space index.
Yes, thank you. Switch it down to twenty-eight? I can do that, okay. Thanks, got some technical help here, and it's helping, it'll soon be with you. Number twenty, sixteen Beaumont. Yeah. Thanks very much. Great, so I've read out the purpose of that, the agent is online. All right, we're seeking a, just a variance as to floor space index. Good afternoon, the agent ordered online, will us?
Yes, hi, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, it's Richard Ziegler from Richard Ziegler Architect, thirty-nine Paulson Street, Toronto, Ontario. We're the agents for Sina and Shaheen, and they're proposing to infill an existing inset balcony. In doing so, will be increasing the GFA beyond the allowable per the zoning by law.
I see, all right.
Just one other thing, too, that the lot's unusual in that there's a, the tablelands are quite small, and that's what the zoning floor space index is based on, not the actual lot area. If you use the whole lot area, the actual floor space index would be only fourteen percent, so. And the existing building doesn't conform, sorry.
Any questions, members, for the applicant or agent? I think we can proceed then to discussions, the single variances, someone would like to.
I'll make a motion.
Yes.
First of all, I think it's, it's clear that there's an attempt to maintain the character of the house through this addition with, and also kind of reinforce the style of, the modern style of the building. The variance is very minor in nature, and with some measures being taken to improve the overall aesthetic appearance from the street. And as the applicant said, the tablelands versus the actual property, this is a very large piece of property with fairly modest building on it. So I find this, the applicant, the proposed variance is minor in nature, and I don't think there's any conditions, there's an advisory from Metrolinks.
I've just checked, the RNFP, it says advisor report, it says no conditions.
No conditions, so as stated with no conditions, and for, I recommend we approve.
I'll do a second here for that motion from Mr. Gogan. Yes, Mizilis, the second's that, all right, all in favor? All right, sir, you have your approval. Has passed. Moving on in our agenda, item twenty-nine, eighteen Olive Avenue. Here's its purpose, to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a rear one-story addition and a rear third-story addition. Committee had before the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. An arborist report prepared privately. Commenting agencies from Transportation Engineering. And there's a staff report from Urban Forestry. We note correspondence in support of two hundred and one at three Olive Avenue and sixteen Olive Avenue.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we do have the agent online, no registered speakers for this item. At this time, we'll unmute Kristin Thompson.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and committee members. My name is Kristin Thompson, and I'm representing the owners of eighteen Olive Avenue. My address is one one three Montrose Avenue in Toronto.
Thank you very much, sorry. All right, sir, just taking a look at the three variances. Just a very concise presentation. I'm just sort of thinking about, there's a rear story, a one-story addition at the rear, and then there's a rear third-story addition.
That's correct. The rear third story is, it's built over top of an existing roof deck that is on top of the existing second floor.
I see, okay.
Look at the elevations. Scrolling down, you can see, so sheet two. Oh, eight, so the side elevation, one more down. You can see the existing rear addition, the back is just a two stories with the peaked roof coming down. So we're proposing to build the third story on top of where that roof deck is, and five-foot addition at the back on the first floor.
Yes, thank you. Members, other questions for the speaker here?
Yes. Thanks, Chair. There was a note from Transportation talking about an encroachment agreement. Are you, are you okay with that as a condition?
Yes, yes. The existing roof eaves on the main peaked roof currently over, are over the existing property lines. So we are just proposing to continue the existing condition, and we understand that the encroachment is required.
Great, thanks.
Sorry. Members, any further questions at all for the agent? No, all right, let's take it into the committee then. Remarks, thoughts about these variances, yes?
I'm happy to bring a motion, Chair. I think this is a very restrained application, and the third floor is within the existing footprint of the building. And it's, and the first floor application, the first floor addition is really small. So I think there's no negative impacts that will arise from approving these. I move approval subject to urban forestry condition one and the transportation condition regarding the encroachment agreement.
Second here for that motion? Yes, Mr. Gogan, I second, all right, all in favor of that with those two conditions? Yes, that has passed, you have your minor rights approval then, subject to urban forestry condition and the encroachment agreement with Transportation. Thank you. All right, moving on to number thirty, there's a flipper. Twenty-four Southwood Drive. Purpose of this next item on Southwood Drive is to commit a one-story ancillary building, a one-car detached garage in the rear yard, sorry, in the rear yard currently under construction. Committee has planned survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. Five photographs of trees on the subject property. And in terms of comments from agencies, et cetera, we have email correspondence from Transportation Engineering.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we do have the agent online, no registered speakers for this item. At this time, we'll unmute the agent. Nanavati?
Yes, thank you. My name is Shahid Nanavati, and I'm representing the client here for twenty-four Southwood Drive. And my address is one three zero four Woodbine, Toronto.
One three Woodbine, is that right?
Woodbine Avenue, Toronto.
Thank you. All right, sir, one-story ancillary building in the rear yard, right. Alright, sir, one-story ancillary building in the rear yard, right, okay. Just gonna take a quick look. I see that there are three variances, just trying to source them out.
Yes, may I speak to it?
Yes, yes, for survey. So please start, your first variance is soft application.
Sure. Sure, through the chair, may I give you a background of this proposal? This proposal only consists of repairing the existing garage because a massive tree next to it fell on it and totally destroyed it. So the insurance company applied for an order to remedy, which the city accepted. During the repair of this detached garage to accommodate the rigid insulation in the foundation for frost protection, the foundation was moved by two inches at the site from its original position. Now, this was not accepted by the city inspector who came and visited the site and who insisted that we should follow the order to remedy to the dart by not changing any aspect of this existing structure. So that two inches was, was something which we should have not done. As we had to reapply for zoning, and because we applied for the zoning, all the conditions which are existing of the existing building at the front, which we are not at all proposing anything there, all those conditions came, came in that package. So truthfully, we are just requesting for this two inches of setback as a variance for this garage. But with the whole package, all the other variances come along. So I request the committee to help us out with it.
Yes, I have a question for you, sir.
Did I hear correctly that it, the two inches that you referred to is, relate specifically to the foundation?
Yes, yes, sir.
So the variance that we'd be approving is for the foundation, not the actual building?
Exactly. So the, 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 once I get this variance, I'm going to go back to the city to revise, to just basically revise our existing permit that we have or the order that we have, and I think the city will accept it. And if you look at the section of the foundation, if you go down the sheets, you'll get there. I think that's, that's the, that's the one which was a tree application, showing the trees. The, the plan that is there. That will give, yes, that's the one. So it was just the two inches. Because we wanted to add the rigid insulation as instructed by the structural engineer, which we had to follow, we, we did the foundation, and, yeah, we should have used probably some other methodology which was not available to us, actually. But it did come in the way, and we had to go for this particular process.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Seeing any other questions or comments?
Just a comment, just for the applicant. It would have been really nice for you to submit a survey or photographs of the previously existing building. Just so, just so we could have seen that it was truly a representation of the, our replacement building, but.
Okay. Okay, I did not think that.
Just afterthought, just afterthought. Thank you, though.
Thank you.
Okay, members, just, just waiting then if there's any motion to come forward.
Chair, I'm happy to bring a motion.
Alright.
I think, I think the applicant's, the agent's description of this being as a replacement garage, I'm satisfied with that. And I, I think the, the variance is being requested to get to that point are mi, are minor. I think, obviously, the parking space is substandard width, and I think that there has been an attempt to keep this as small as possible and as reflective of what was there before. So I'm happy to move approval without condition.
Alright, I'll just add, I know Zizal's in the transportation, yeah, had no concerns with the parking space width, so that's all great. Alright, here, seconded for that motion then for approval without conditions. Alright, from Mr. Gogan. Alright, all in favor? Okay, that has passed. Thank you. One-twenty-five Albany Avenue, just going to read out its purpose of that. So at one-twenty-five Albany, we're going to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear one-story addition with a new deck and stairs. Committee has before to copy a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, three-D renderings from Tom Basse, Basse agent, one photograph of the subject property, tree protection plan, and a covering letter from Mr. Bizai as, as agent. Support, there are form letters in support by owners or occupants of, either on Albany Avenue or on Wells Street. Opposition, there's correspondence and opposition from Robert Wallace and Paul Leonard at one-twenty-seven Albany.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we do have the agent online. No registered speakers for this item.
No registered speakers, okay.
At this time, we'll unmute the agent.
Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thanks, just, just ask just one second, sorry, just gonna call up your, your item, thirty-one here. Thanks, sir, just for waiting, just wanted to pull that up. So, my, I see, there's just a building depth variation. Standard is seventeen meters, and you want to go to eighteen point nine-five?
Yeah, that's correct.
Do we need any kind of presentation here? I wouldn't think so on this, alright?
Yeah, I'm, I'm available to make comments. I'm, I'm the, the agent, Tom Bessai, Denegri Bessai Studio. So we're at ten-eight-eight Bathurst Street. Yeah. I can read a short statement, or we can, you know, I can take questions from the committee.
Why don't you read a short statement, nice concise statement, and we'll make a decision on this.
Very good. Okay, so the permitted maximum building depth, seventeen, proposed eighteen point five-four-nine-seven meters. The proposed single-story rear addition is modest in nature and serves to extend the family room of the existing house to a dimension of three meters or ten feet. It is to be built in the position of an existing deck and trellis to be removed. New wood steps connect the extension to the backyard. The materials and details of the addition respect the character of the existing house and will fit in with the character of the neighborhood. It is our view that the proposed renovation addition meets the intent of the bylaw and official plan, and is a minor variance. We have worked closely with the clients to create an integrated and discreet addition that resonates with the character of the existing home and the surrounding neighborhood. The owners have canvassed many neighbors and have received general support for the minor addition. As you mentioned, letters of support are attached to the file. No, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Members, give her a motion. Yes, Muzilis.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. I would like to put forward a motion to approve this application. It's one variance, and it's minor with no other condition.
Yes, I can do it, Mr. Allison, sorry.
I just wanted to note, it seems, I did notice there's quite a bit of astroturf on the subject property, and I just wonder whether or not a revised site plan needs to be submitted as a condition to address that.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we can't take in a revised site plan because then it's not a plan that members would have had a chance to review.
Fair enough. Well.
So is there a condition?
Well, I.
What exactly?
There's a, there's a discrepancy between the photos that were submitted and the site plan, particularly with respect to the soft landscaping. I understand that's not a variance before us, but I just want to make sure that what is being presented is consistent with what's actually on the site.
So there could be a condition that you impose, that it's built, like it's tied to the site plan? So that when they go through the permit stage?
Yeah, I mean, the inspector may or may not catch that, and I, I realize that these things get overlooked all the time, but.
No, but I think that's something that they, they would catch right away, especially if it's in the front yard. So maybe if committee is to approve the application, tie it to the site plan.
And at least the applicant is aware, the agent is aware, there may be a, that, that may come up later, so they can, easier to address it before it comes up.
I wish to amend the, amend the application.
Through you, Mr. Chair, it's not an amending?
It's a condition.
It's a condition tied to site plan.
Could I also make another friendly amendment?
So how about I just, I redraw my motion, so let's talk and then I put it.
Okay. No, no, I, I agree with your motion. I, I think it's a fine application, but I'd like to tie it to one of the side elevations just to limit that extension to one, one story, I think, because I, I think it would be a different question if that were two stories. So either, either of the side elevations.
A-two-oh-three, north.
Through you, Mr. Chair, there could be a condition to tie it to the site plan and all elevations, just to be consistent.
Yeah, substantially in accordance with, if possible.
Yes, it always is.
Yeah, okay.
So who's putting that forward?
You want to do that, Muzilis? Okay, alright, so I move approval of the application subject to it being tied to site plan and all elevations, please.
And all elevations, alright. Seconded for that, then, Muzilis. Second, are we all in favor? It is passed. Okay, sir, I think you've heard of that, that condition, and it is, is approved by committee. It's passed. We'll move on to item. Move on to item thirty-two, and the address is twenty-three Richmond Avenue. Committee has, the purpose is as follows, to permit the one-story ancillary building, a one-car detached garage in the rear yard of the property, which is currently under construction. Committee has the following and a copy of the survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, and five photographs of the subject property that were received in March.
Through you, Mr. Chair, the agent is here in person. We don't have any registered speakers for this item.
Alright, I'll just move a bit.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair.
Good afternoon, thanks for waiting so long, and just going to magnify these, the two variances, alright, yes. Why don't you just tell us your application in, in just a concise fashion, and then it's just a, a one-story garage, that this is not, there's no habitable space in this?
No, it's not. Actually, we got the permit approval last year, but then during the construction, the contractor decided to go a little bit higher and make it a little bit bigger, so that's why we're applying for the community now.
And the height seems, seems modest, and from four meters to four-point-oh-six meters?
Yes, just six centimeters.
Six centimeters, okay. Members, any questions of the agent that's here before us? Alright, alright. Thank you. Now let's proceed to a motion. Jordan, can we look to you?
Sure. Sure, just. Sure, I'm, I'm happy to bring a motion to approve. I, I did have an, initially have a little bit of concern, but I, I, I think that's mitigated by the fact that there is a bit of a grade change on this lot. You notice that the, the properties adjacent that it backs onto are much at a higher elevation, and I think that really helps to mitigate the impact of the size and, and massing. And for those reasons, I, I, I think the application is supportable. So that said, I would like to move a motion to approve the subject application, and I don't see any standard condition. So that would be without condition.
I'd second that, Chair.
Alright, all in favor then?
Thank you so much.
Miss you, have your, have your approval on that. Thank you. Alright, we're down to thirty-three, we're coming to the last item on the agenda. Very good, just want to call it up. Yes, I just did, dealing then with item thirty-three, one-eleven Davisville Avenue, so the purpose is to alter the, alright, alter the existing twenty-two-story residential building by converting a storage locker room on basement level one into a market garden use with an aeroponic growing system, which will supply local restaurants and grocery stores. Remember this one. The committee has a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, nineteen photographs of the subject property, and a covering letter from the agent, Tyler, Tyler Flick.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we do have the agent here in person. No registered speakers for this item.
Hi, Mr. Flick, hold you right here, you're right here.
Thank you so much.
Go ahead.
Tyler Flick for one-eleven Davisville, my personal address is forty-five Browning.
Alright, thank you.
So I'm here to request a minor variance to allow us to install an aeroponic vegetable garden within a storage space at one-eleven Davisville. The building being solely zoned R, we're requesting an allowance to operate the three-hundred-and-fifteen square meter space under the market garden allowance. Future Fresh is a social enterprise created to help with the growing food insecurity and rising food costs faced by Torontonians by utilizing unused gray spaces with accessible vegetable gardens. The storage space in question is located on the B-one floor adjacent to parking area and was used, and sorry, and is used as a storage space for tenants to keep their winter tires and seasonal equipment, but with there being no need for this service caprito, the landowner had cleared out the space over a decade ago, and it has been empty ever since. With minimal retrofitting of the utilities as well as food-grade sanitation of the space, we would be able to install an aeroponic vegetable garden that would not only benefit the tenants of the building but the surrounding restaurants and markets. There would be no point of sale on the premises, and all deliveries would be done by a non-commercial light vehicle in and out of the connecting parking access so as to not impact the building in any way. Our aeroponic towers are modular, high-efficiency water and power systems, meaning that there would be no additional stress on the existing grid. Each unit requires the same as like an LED television. The towers require no pesticides and no fertilizers and are solely a water-mist system. With the existing street-level ventilation access, we would have complete control over atmospheric conditions, removing any concern over humidity. Through direct delivery, donations, and community involvement, we would be able to create a direct supply chain supporting the high-density family community.
Alright, is, is all of the storage space being used up? It's, it's not available for other?
It's been completely cleared out and empty, and they've had the door locked for almost ten years now because there was just not enough requirement from the tenants who had cars. They have a, a lot of parking availability in total, just because of the nature of the building, not a lot of tenants own cars. So they were happy to find a, a use for the space that benefited both their building and then also the greater community.
Is aeroponic growing, I'm not sure, is this, is this vertical growing?
Yeah, so it's each one is a, is a, its own freestanding modular tower with its own gooseneck lights that come down, and so it allows for easy access and also low impact. There's no requirement for any building or any changing of the space. It's essentially just retrofitting into access existing power and existing water.
How about smells, for example?
Nothing at all. It actually has been proven to enrich the air quality because it pulls CO2 out of the air and then releases oxygenated air into the space, so though there is no direct flame that it would be enriching it, it makes it actually a better living space.
So some employees have to go into that space to cultivate the vegetables?
Yes, yes, so the only concern with that is that there is eyewear required just because of how bright the lights can get. But other than that, it's a very pleasant and actually a really nice experience being in the space.
Serving your bright lights, are they, no cannabis?
No cannabis, no. Solely for, well, we are, to be honest, we're taking technology. There have been, you know, countless dollars put, investing in the cannabis, and we're trying to use that technology to. technology to grow vegetables for people instead.
I guess it's like a true planning issue in the sense of, you know, it's a residential zone.
Of course.
New use is being introduced, and that new use is perhaps normal to certain members of the committee.
In fairness, that is a question that we get a lot.
So fine, members, any further questions of the applicant at all? Do you need any other approvals, provincial ministry?
No, we've got Agrocorp Ontario, we've worked closely with the fire department and other services, we have the full support of Caprite, obviously. There's nothing else that we require to move forward with starting this project.
Vehicles in the business? I'm just trying to think, like, any additional load on parking and stuff like that?
No, actually, because of the nature of this specific building, we're able to use two, we will be able to use two of the empty parking slots that are directly linked to the exit there, to be able to just very quickly take anything into a non-commercial light van, and the production will not be meaningful commercial production, it's going to be operated through one single van unit for deliveries.
If this is a minor variance process, there would have been some notification, et cetera, any complaints?
Yes, so we posted a sign, two signs outside of the Davisville location, and then canvassed in the lobby tenants of the building, and we've got a lot of very positive feedback, people very excited to hear that something like this is going to be going into the space.
All right, members, I'm sorry, dominated those questions, any questions of the applicant agent here?
One last question, do you have them operating anywhere else in the city?
We do not, no. This will actually be the first time that this technology is brought to Toronto. There are some similar projects in Calgary, but there's nothing like this, even in Canada right now.
Members, I'm in your hands.
I'll move it, we approve this application. I think it's a great thing, especially in a residential building, that we're, you know, creating quality food for local communities from our own communities. It is minor in nature, and it's a good use for an underutilized space in an existing building, so.
All right, all right. And all in favor then, has been first and second, and all right, and one dissenting vote from Mizila.
I wish we got more detailed information, because what we got is just a green outline on the site plan and just some empty space photos, so I couldn't imagine, maybe my imagination, I have imagination problem, but that's why.
You've got your approval then, sir, one dissenting vote.
Thank you very much.
All right, well, good luck with that business, it's an interesting use, maybe we'll see more.
Fantastic, thank you very much, return.
Thank you.
All right, members, we've reached the end of the application, so thank you for your support and help throughout this, and managed to bring it in by five-thirty, that's very good.
Through you, Mr. Chair, then we'll adjourn at five-seventeen PM.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, have a good evening.
Thank you.